Okay, I think we have the agendas. You might have to share a little bit. So we would like to open up the Teaneck Board of Education regular public meeting by first saluting the flag.
To lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hereby call to order the regular public meeting of the Teaneck Board of Education held on Wednesday, April 8th, 2015 in the third floor Shermer-Laporta Student Center at the Teaneck High School. Adequate notice for this meeting has been sent to the record of the suburbanite filed with the municipal clerk of the township of Teaneck and posted inside the Teaneck Board of Education on 1 Madison Street on Monday, April 6th, 2015. Roll call, please.
Dr. Dugan?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Roy.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, I wish to reaffirm the goals for 2014 and 15 of the Teaneck Board of Education. Goal number one, students attending the Teaneck Public Schools will acquire the skills, knowledge, and understanding to be successful in the 21st century. Goal number two, teachers and administrators in the Teaneck Public Schools will acquire the skills, knowledge, and understanding necessary to support student achievement. Goal number three, the environment in the Teaneck Public Schools will be safe and respectful with students and adults appreciative of the unique contributions of members of the community. Goal number four, the Teaneck Public Schools will communicate effectively with parents and with the community. Goal number five, the Teaneck Public Schools will provide funding for goals 1 through 4 and sustain school facilities while respecting community resources. At this time, we wish to turn our meeting over to our superintendent, Barbara Pinsak.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have to the board, I don't have a full report even though we are planning things for the schools, but as you know that we're on spring recess. But I do want to point out that at the high school at 7:00 PM on Monday, and I made flyers and put the flyers in the back, the Teaneck High School PTSO is sponsoring a program called Digitally Distracted, The Role of Technology on the Developing Team. So this is a person who's coming in to do this presentation for the public, for our students hopefully, and PTSO members. And thanks to Adrianne Williams, our student assistance coordinator, she helped shepherd this program. So it's Monday, but it promises to be very interesting. Next, based on some of the questions and input from the board about items for the budget, we tried to listen very carefully and look at our notes and review what it was that you wanted. So we do have some other items to present to you tonight regarding the budgets, the budget and some more information, and I hope it's the information that you seek. Additionally, I want to let you know that we're ready to schedule two, up to two additional board meetings before the board meeting on May 6th. If you choose to, if you choose to have an additional board meetings, and of course there's the question of whether you want another finance committee meeting. So we thought we would, you know, first show you what we have. We think there are additional things that you seek, and I am putting together that additional data for you. For example, a better breakdown for the extracurricular activities at the schools such as you have already for the sports program. You asked specifically for numbers of students, name of the sport, grade point average of the students, and a lot of other affirmative, I'm sorry, title line information, awards and achievements of the students on the various sports teams, and we have that all for you. And Dr. Fronapple printed that out for the board members. I believe that we sent it before, but maybe not in this format. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Fronapple, who has additional information for you. And please feel free to go to the gray chairs, the other gray chairs, if you want to see the presentation.
I'm calling this the Budget Discussion Chapter 4, since I've done it four times, so, and I'm sure there'll be a few more chapters before we get to May the 6th. Now, we've had some concerns from, from the board about transparency and not having the process being open, because I disagree with that, but we're going to try now to put up here where we are and address those concerns so that some board members may have more information to make an informed decision as to where we're going. Now, I know I've had one of my unsympathetic correspondents on the board has indicated that my predecessor, of course, knew the ins and outs of the Teaneck budget, and that is true, because I don't know the ins and outs of the Teaneck process, but I've dealt with budgets for more than 25 years, so that is true. And I'm going to try to make for some board members' muddy waters clear. Now, we've already gone through the revenues. Now, actually, my budget was off by $1. So I will ask the board to adopt the preliminary budget resolution again, because I had it reviewed by the county office, and when it came back, it says there must be a typo with the budget, because you're off a dollar. But since we've already passed it, and actually, it's got to do with the local taxes, the budget we passed had the N number, it's 342, it's actually 341. So that was, that was an error on my part. Now, when we presented last week, we went through the revenues, and we have, we've gone through, and we talked about, particularly, we talked about the bank cap. Now, that seems to be an issue. We have available for use $1,812,743. Last year, this was the, with the $1,549,045, has expired. It wasn't used, and it's now expired, so we can't take advantage of that. But we do have this amount of number, and I'm gonna, there'll be a later slide that will show you how that, how that, how we got to that number. Of course, the expenditure chart is there, and that hasn't changed, and that's not going to change. All right, here we go. Now, the bottom line in reaching the budget, we have to make it whole. Now, we talked about breakage from retirements. I'm sorry, yeah. Once I get used to this, we talked about, that was part of our budget presentation, outsourcing the lunchroom aides, funding 30% of the lunchroom aides, the outsourced for next year from Fund 61, which is the cafeteria account, outsourcing 39 paraprofessional positions, reduce teaching positions by 10, eliminating courtesy busing, that would be for the 1.4 miles, which would translate into eliminating 11 bus routes, reducing the non-public routes by four buses, we talked about that, and there were some safety concerns about that. Now, we're, and we also had reduce administrative positions, three positions. Now, the concern was, do we go to the full bank cap and use it? And of course, you don't have to use it. You can just use your 2%, or you could even go below the 2% cap. But if you do that, well, then you've got to make up the loss of revenue someplace else. So these are additional to be considered. There's three additional positions, administrative positions, both certificated and uncertificated, which would realize a savings of 341,044. Outsource the school nurses, the six positions, that means they would outsource these positions to an outside agency, very much like the, like the paraprofessionals, and I believe it would be through the Region 5. And that would be the savings there. We're doing roof replacements on two schools, well, we'd have to eliminate that if they needed to get to that number, and we could do that. That would be 261,829. We didn't have extracurricular activities on the agenda, but if cuts have to come from there, then these are the total amounts, and you'd have to cut something from there to make the budget whole. So you have the high school at 154,000, the middle schools at 64, and the elementary at 9, total 227. So if you're going to reduce some of those, or eliminate some of those extracurricular activities, then you'd have to take that from that particular number. Also, the sports program, and I provided the board with the total of all of the sports programs and broken down participants, and that number is $761,386, so that, you'd have to take something from there. And then we'd have to eliminate the surplus healthcare costs that I had built into the budget as a result of the new Obamacare that's going into effect, and this district might be subject to what is called a Cadillac tax, and I'm not going to get into that tonight, because I have a hard time understanding it myself, but I wanted to have a little cushion just in case. So now, all of these cuts are back on the table. Bank cap. Now, we have available for use in next year's budget, the 1516, at that amount, 1.81273, which is the budget that we presented preliminarily and was approved by the board. Now, this is how we got there. Now, you have, if they were not to take advantage of any bank cap, 1,240,766 would expire this year. That means we would not have use of that next year. And that all we would have remaining for 1617 would be the 571,977. Now, I also want to point out that the surplus for 1516 is at $250,000. For a district this size, that's very small, but that is the minimum amount that a district must have in its surplus. The surplus should be 2% of your general fund budget, which would be somewhere about $1.8 million. So going in, we're pretty tight all the way around. So if the board decides not to use the full bank cap, or to use a portion of it, whatever, then that money has to be taken from where we have it, where we have it listed in the reductions. It's got to come out of there to make the budget whole. And that's the most simplest way I can put it, because if you're going to take money out, then we have to take it off, if it comes out of the revenue side, you got to take it off the, the expenditure side. And that's how you get there. Now, we presented this last week as the state aid over the last six years, and we're looking at better than $16 million that the district has lost because of this changing in funding formulas, and we've been flat the last couple of years. And any time you are flat, you are, it is a reduction, because you're not even getting the CPI, which next year would be 1.34%, so you're not even getting that. So a flat state aid is a reduction in state aid, because everything else is going up, all your fixed costs are going up, your health benefits are going up, and even your 2% cap at the 1.6 is not going to sustain your fixed costs moving forward. Yeah, well, we went back to make sure we refined the numbers, and we actually pulled up the documents. Let's go back to the, well, let's go back to the revenues. Here. Here's your revenues. Well, this, the pie chart was taken from the revenue sheet. So, here. That's your state aid. That was last year, which was a larger number, but that was the actual number you got from 1340. Yeah? Okay. Okay. Well, don't forget, that includes, that includes your extraordinary aid, 1.1,550,000. Now, in most districts, they usually, if they can, they don't put that into the budget. When that comes in, it's miscellaneous revenue, and then they have that for extra spending. But some districts need it, you need it here, so your budget, I know if you don't get the $1,050,000, you get less, and then you got to make up the difference somewhere else. So you always try to estimate it a little bit lower. Yeah, all this state aid is included in this number, in the 64. And you're taking here, you're taking here your actual state aid, and you're taking this, the 520 and the 1,005, plus the 130 and other state aid. Hey, these are the numbers. So that's 5,266,235, the 1,050 in extraordinary aid, and your 85,000 as other state aid, but they give it to you for non-public transportation. So I think if you add those numbers up, you'll get to that number that we had on the revenue chart there. But that's not how it comes in. Now, the state aid you get, this number, you get over 20 payments, two payments a month, September through June, and actually, you don't get the June payments till July, because they, they hold those back. A few years ago, they made a decision, because then it goes into the state's next budget. So you really get those two payments in July. But the 1,050 doesn't come in until the, they get all of the applications for extraordinary aid from the state. There's a pot of money, and it's divided up accordingly. And that usually comes in, in July or August of the next year. Like this past, you've got, we won't get this year's extraordinary money, it's almost the end of the year. Boy, into, into next year, into July. So you're always, actually, and you're laying out that money till you get it back. It's like your grant money. You have to lay out the money and then put in to get reimbursed. So you're laying out that, you used to get that money regardless, and your state aid payments twice a month. But now, in grants, you have to spend the money first, go on to a system, it's called the Epic System, the E-Week system, Sage System for IDA, and then you put in what you've expended already, and then they send you the money. But you have to lay it out, so you have to have cash to lay out. You have to have a good cash flow, otherwise you can get into trouble with that. So are we clear now, at least on the revenue? And even going to 1617, you see now, all we can count on is the 2% cap. We don't know if we'll have any money left over from next year's budget that we can throw into the following budget. With the budget being as tight as it is, there probably won't be anything left. So I don't know where other revenue sources will come from. We're assuming that state aid will be flat again, we're still going to have the same governor, same policy, so pretty much so, I believe state aid will be flat for next school year. And we're also estimating the same extraordinary aid. Everything else is, we don't know what those revenue sources are going to be, and we can put any kind of number down there, but it doesn't make it real until it happens. And when you look at the expenditures, your salaries are still 50% of what you got, and those are going to keep going up regardless of where the revenue comes from. So if you don't have enough to pay, then you got to take it from somewhere else, something else has got to give. Now, we, when we presented the budget last week, we had it flat, we were able to, in this budget, restore at least the non-public transportation and the courtesy at 1.4. And we took monies from other areas, and we added, of course, in the roof lease payment. But now, everything's back on the table, and all of these, something has to be taken from all of these areas to make this budget work for next year, no matter how you do it. And again, the bank cap, you don't have to take it now, this is something you don't have to take. If you don't take the 1,240, that will expire this year, leaving the 571. Or if you just decide to take the 1,200, or let's say you only want 500,000, well, then the difference has got to be made up somewhere else on the expenditure side. And again, we're going in with a surplus of the minimum requirement for a district this size, 250. I mean, you can get into trouble with one lawsuit and be wiped out with that, so there's not much there. State aid over the six years, this has been the reduction in administrators from 910, which was presented last week, so all these positions have been eliminated. So we do have on the table six more positions. So that's where we are with the budget. So I hope now that there is some kind of transparency so that you can make a decision on what you want to do. Yeah? Okay. Which, which, which one?
The one in the window seat.
Oh, all right. Okay. Think if we dim the lights a little bit, might be better? Now, it was much clearer last week, we didn't have that question, so what happened between the presentation last week and this week? Is it a little better now? Now, right now, we have the budget flat, it's funded with what we've spoken about last week. But now, if the board does not want to go to the full bank cap, whatever they decide to take out of that, we have to then reduce from the expenditure side to make the budget And we give you where the reductions can come from. We certainly will implement whatever the board chooses, but we say, you know, doing it and liking it is not the same thing. But that's where it is. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have. Yes? Actually, we take the, we take this and then create the pie chart. Yes? Now, the percentage is 49.7% of the budget, yeah. And the reason the salaries went down is because you're outsourcing positions, and of course, those salaries will then come from out of the salary accounts, and then the outsourced positions are going into other areas of the budget where you see increases. There's not a lot to take from here in this budget. Even with my unfamiliarity with, with how things work in Teaneck, the budget's got to be flat, yes? Actually, how you get, when they, when they put, yes? Okay. Oh, so you'll have an opportunity to ask those questions later. Okay, fine. And I'll, I'll address that when, at that time. How about the board members? Now, now's the time to ask questions. And I'll send you these via email tomorrow, so you can look at it and have a chance to go over it. And any other information that you might need, I'll email it out to you. Yes? Yes? Okay. Okay. Now, we've already talked about the breakage from retirements. We've already talked about outsourcing the lunchroom aides, 32 positions, but there will be a total of 47 positions that will be outsourced, and we are proposing to fund 30% of those from the Fund 61, which is the cafeteria fund. That is money that you make from your cafeterias, it's not part of the general fund. And most districts do use that money either to fund lunchroom aides, or also buy equipment and upgrades to their facilities. Yes?
If we don't go to cap, from the nurses below, are things going to be?
You're actually, from here, these additional three administrators, all the way down, you have to take it from there. Whatever amount you come up with, if you don't go to the bank cap, then you've got to take it from, from these, from where we have it, where we've added, the additional three administrator positions, the outsourcing of the nurses, the roof replacement, reducing extracurricular activities to some point, reducing sports programs to some point, and eliminate the healthcare surplus in that cost. So that's where that money would have to come, whatever that number would be. Okay, I'll leave it up in the case when we get to the public portion, and I'll put it back on a slide and be able to answer your questions.
When we get to the public part of that, we don't want to get into a debate about it. They can ask questions, and we'll get short, crisp answers.
I just have a question about the adjusted budget. Is that the same as the projection, our expectations for actual spending this year?
Now, which one are you going on, the adjusted for this year or last year?
I'm looking at the 2014-15 adjusted.
Okay.
2014-15 adjusted budget. I just want to understand what that means.
That means that what has taken place, that means what has taken? What has taken place this year? In other words, you start out with a number, and those numbers sometimes change because of transfers or other expenditures, so then there's an adjusted budget. And when you go into the state to enter your budget, you have to put in the adjusted numbers, and that's what that's called.
The question I have, though, is, that's a, that's still an adjusted budget number. What is our actual spend projected for this year relative to that adjusted budget?
Well, I can't answer that yet. I haven't done a formal projection on what will be left over. I don't know that you will have anything left over. You might spend it at all. Yeah, we're still in the school year, so we've got six more payrolls left, and we've got other expenses that we have to pay. Even though we've frozen the budget, we're hoping to have something left over.
Yeah, the question is, assuming, the question is assuming, again, a projection is our best guess. What we do know historically is in the budgeted number, there was some excess in certain categories. That's the way it's been managed in the past. We've wiped out a large part of the budget fund balance. What I'm trying to calculate is a starting point to say, okay, what's the baseline number in spending for this year? And we've asked for a projection previously.
To tell you the truth, Dr. Dugan, I don't know what you want, to be honest with you. Maybe you need to come in and look at it yourself.
Okay, hold on.
Because I don't know what you want.
I think I can clarify that.
Yeah, can you clarify that?
Yeah, I think that if we look at our previous budgets, we can compare our actual expenditures in previous years. And this particular year, we had a budget, and I think what he's asking is, okay, you can see what we spent up to this point, and based on the rate of expenditures, we can then predict how much we're going to spend. That's what he's asking for.
All right. Well, here, you've had, let's look at the revenue chart. You've had, you've had what we call excess surplus, and you've budgeted that over the last couple of years, what you call budgeted fund balance. Now, for next year, you've got $1,084,890. Is it possible you might have $1 million left over for this, from this year as much? It's possible. Possible. But you won't now know an exact number till the audit's completed, and you've paid all your bills, and, and closed the school year out. Then you get a real number. I can give you a number, but it's a number.
Okay, I think we can work this out later on. I mean, what we can do is, for the next meeting, what we'll do is, we'll show what the expenditure were compared to the actual budget for the last, say, three years, and then looking into this year and the next year, we can then say what the, predict what the expenditures might be. Does that, does that work for you? Okay.
Well, we can look at the budget now, and give us what's available as of today or tomorrow. And that number might be 3, 4 million dollars, but we don't know what that will be come June 30th.
I understand, okay.
But we can do that.
Okay, all right, cool. Anybody else have a question? Yeah?
Just, I guess, a comment or question. Even with that being said, that number simply is part of our surplus, which is then goes forward to reduce the taxes further, right? By whatever that amount is, doesn't that just simply get rolled into surplus, which is then tax relief? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's not like it disappears? So it's not?
The only thing disappears is your bank cap, if you don't use it, that disappears.
I see, I see the numbers presented tonight, and, you know, not much difference in terms of the amount of money. I think you said a dollar. But it's more than that to me. You know, we now have added about $227,000 of extracurricular activities, which to some people may or may not have a direct impact on the education of our students, and I think otherwise, I think it is extremely close and relevant to the education of our students. Previous budgets, I mentioned that we're still cutting 80% of the total amount, has a direct impact on the education of our students. of the total amount has a direct impact on the education of our students. Adding another two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars increases that eighty percent to who knows what now, eighty-five, ninety percent. And before we make any decisions tonight, I think we really need to reconsider, you know, those numbers. I think we, you know, it's... To me, just created more harm and to the opportunities we present to our students and the administration. And I think we really... We really need to look at everything that has less of a direct impact on the education of our students and continue to reduce from there if necessary. You know, if we don't use bank cap, it's a, you know, large amount of money that needs to be made up. And like we said, like we know, there's not too many places where to take from. Unfortunately, it has to come from the areas that have a direct impact on the education of our students. If the Board does decide to reduce, you know, to reduce from extracurricular activities, I would like to propose that we give parents an opportunity to pay, to participate, rather than just cut out, you know, any opportunities they have to participate in extracurricular activities. Thank you.
So we did have that discussion in Policy Committee about primarily sports. And also, I think there was a discussion of extracurricular activities. The issue is this, free and reduced lunch, kids... Let me just finish. So you have significant numbers of free and reduced lunch students. You have also, you know, there's a reason that you have extracurricular activities. And I think probably anybody in this room knows the reasons that you do. So, and many of them, most of them are academic and community service activities. So I think my recommendation is not to cut extracurricular activities. I certainly wouldn't ever recommend, well, would not recommend this year, having people pay for the extracurricular activities if that's something that we take some time and look at down the line. But frankly, those bottom items aren't recommended by the administration at all. And they would all cause difficulty. So just so you know where I'm coming from.
I just want to kind of frame what I hope that we can accomplish here. There are two primary things. One, for us as a Board, to have the opportunity to vet all of these sorts of issues so that, you know, any questions that you have, if you don't see it here, material that you need, that we can be very clear about that. So we can give clear instructions to Dr. Franafel and to our superintendent. And then, two, to also give a charge to our Finance Committee that may have to work out the nitty-gritty of this because it's gonna be hard to work out some of this stuff. So as we sort of speak towards this, have that in mind, that you want to basically convey a direction. We don't want to get into philosophizing and all this because right now, we're at the nitty-gritty. Something's gonna get cut, one way or the other. Okay, David, and then Howard.
Yeah, you know, we talked about putting all options on the table, right? And their trade-offs. And I think, I don't see any differences from what was presented last week. And one question is, you know, what about outsourcing the day shift custodians? Has to be added to the list as well in terms of purely as a trade-off that's excluding the mechanics and all the other maintenance people. And then, we talked about also perhaps some other groups as well. I'm not suggesting we do that.
No, I got you.
But I think there's some trade-offs in terms of, you know, the Paris versus, you know, the various groups. Because unfortunately, the other piece of it, you know, I'm not sure if there's any union representation here, but we talked about the possibilities of some givebacks. But I don't think we're gonna get an answer today in this regard. And I really want to emphasize that we're between a rock and a hard place. And, you know, the salary structure as currently defined is really unsustainable. Four to six percent raises between year five and thirteen is not possible.
Well, let me just say something about that, that while there has been discussion between myself and the superintendent about some of the issues that were brought up by yourself and a number of the other Board members about putting things on the table. It's not a long time between last week and this week in terms of getting really information that's really useful in terms of being comprehensive about that. Even if we're gonna put it on the table, then we would need some estimate, okay, how much of the savings would be? We have not put out an RFP or anything like that. So some of these things, we would have to kind of ballpark it. And we may have to do that. But it will happen. And that's one of the reasons why we propose to put more of these meetings in place so that, you know, as we move along and as things develop. Because also, you have to realize as a Board, you're shifting. We're all shifting because we have to make these hard decisions and we're trying to look underneath the hood. And I think that's a reasonable sort of thing to do. And I also want to put out that two years ago, this used to be a modus operandi, meaning that we would go by department by department. And we did that for months. And then people said, well, we don't want that because for whatever reason, they felt it was too detailed. Now, in midstream, we have to kind of switch back into that. And now, we have a new business administrator. We have other issues that are on the table that are sort of distracting us as well. So what I'm asking the Board to be is patient, but to also be clear. You've been very clear about what you want. And we can get the expenditure thing. We can also put the other stuff on the table that you talked about.
And just following up, I just want to make this clear is that we're looking for the ballpark estimates. I mean, it doesn't have to be exact. And we're looking at plus or minus, you know, is it five percent? So for example...
No, that's fair.
And we use historical information as the baseline.
Thank you for the presentation. Although I do wish that the last document that was up on the screen was within our packet because it's really the basis of the discussion that we're having regarding finance. Where are these reductions coming from? I want to piggyback, but in another direction, on the statements made regarding extracurricular activities, which I believe certainly belong in the curriculum in the school as an offering. I believe that extracurricular activities should be financially barrier-free to the student. There should be no expense involved to a student for whatever we offer. And the offer that we make to students of what's available may in fact be less in a forthcoming year than it was in a previous year. So I am not against cuts to these programs. I am against having a fee structure put in place when we know that forty percent of the students in a school would probably not be in a position to pay for it just based on free lunch kind of statistics going around. And I'm not saying draconian measures in all different areas. But let's make sure that, you know... I don't like the phrase "share the pain", but in a sense, you can't hold some things aloof from change. And again, I don't use the word "cuts". It's a euphemism to say, "let's modify", but it's cuts. And you can't ignore it in certain areas, which we've done for quite a few years.
You know, with all the various discussions, it's all about cuts, not about adding, you know, technology in the 21st century. We haven't talked about technology. Wouldn't it be wonderful if our students, like the students in the charter school, could all have, you know, technology? But, you know, there's no information about any possibilities of growing programs. It's all about the cuts. And I'm certainly not in favor. We already discussed in that extensive list, the top half, which would be if we didn't, if we did include bank cap. And the possibilities of what else, whatever draconian cuts would have to be made if we did not go to bank cap is just continual decimation of our public school system, which we know will continuously be on that downward slide as we move forward. So I'm certainly not in favor of not using the bank cap. I feel that it's an opportunity to take advantage of that, which will no longer be available. And if we don't do it now, we could just continually be putting ourselves in a position to have less and less for our students.
This is obviously painful for everybody concern. Howard, I'm gonna have to disagree with you on the whole issue of having parents pay for certain activities. I completely hear where you're coming from. I would love to be able to say that we would be able to afford that. Let's talk about reality. We can't afford that. There are people, there are parents in this school system, and I was one of them when my kids went here, who could afford to pay that kind of fee. And from my point of view, I completely... Well, even if it weren't illegal to charge people on free and reduced lunch, and it is illegal, I would not want to charge those students, period. But for those parents who can afford to kick something into the pot, that has to be tapped. And I'm sorry, but there's lots of school districts that do this. Ridgewood, which is a far more wealthy district than we are, has done this for twenty years. And for us to be able to say that we can't put this kind of thing into effect now, I think is insane. We cannot, we cannot continue to fund everything. It's just not possible. So from my point of view, we have to look at other sources of revenue or we have to look at what's gonna be a really hard decision to make and one that I quite frankly don't want to make. And that is to cut these programs altogether.
Could we bring that slide up? The one that lists the cuts, if that's possible? What we're talking about is...
Yeah, you probably want to leave it up there because we may be referring to it.
Yeah, no, what I wanted to say is that I'm looking at this particular slide and I have to agree with Jevon that this is draconian. I don't know how you could look at it any other kind of a way. We're outsourcing our paraprofessionals. We're cutting administrative staff. We're... And I'm just dealing with the top half of the list. And I can't see it all that well, but I know what's there. It's, it would have a impact, a fundamental impact in the nature of our district. The majority of students in TNEC attend TNEC public schools. Their parents have decided that they should attend the schools and take advantage of what their tax dollars support. I just don't see us... I don't want my kids or my grandkids or my friends' children being in a school that doesn't have a full-time nurse, doesn't have any extracurricular activities or severely reduced activities. I support wholeheartedly a well-rounded student. And we want to bring opportunities to these students. And we don't talk about that much. We talk about what we can take away from them, but we don't talk about what we can bring to them. And I'm gonna say something that's really gonna throw you off. I think teachers in general are underpaid. Maybe not the teachers in TNEC, but teachers are fundamental to our children's education. And if you look at some of the other countries that have high-achieving student populations, they elevate their teachers. We're always in here bashing them, and we need to stop that. Oh, one more point, one more point. So I'm advocating very strongly that we use the bank cap. Because if we don't use it, and I know that's not necessarily a justification, if we don't use it, we lose it and we will never get it back. But we will also, as I said, we will change the fundamental nature of this district. And our children deserve an education. They deserve a good education. All, a lot of the children that attend the TNEC public schools, their parents cannot afford private school. And I'm, if you can do that for your child, so be it. Although, I think that a lot of times, you're missing out on a lot of the wonderful opportunities that are here. I've had, I've converted some parents who have sent their kids to the academies and have sent their children to private schools. And they've come here and they have just been amazed at the programs and opportunities that we all pay for. And I grew up in TNEC. My family's been here over fifty years. And one of the things that we were most proud of is the fact that TNEC's public schools provide opportunities to everyone. Everyone, no matter what their challenge is. And we have got to start considering and concerning ourselves with everybody, not just ours. Everybody's child. And that's all I, that's how I feel about it.
Okay, before we, I'll get to you guys, I don't know which order. But what I want to sort of put on the table then... So we're talking about whether or not, just so we not just have random comments sort of going out into the ether, that is gonna take us to a point. What we're discussing at this point is whether we're going to go to bank cap or not. Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about when it's all said and done? Okay, so when we finish all of this course and everyone's had their say, we'll be able to get some clear instructions to the Finance Committee of what to wrestle with and with Mr., with Dr. Franafel in terms of what he needs to do? Is that... Are we on the same page with that? Okay, I just want to be clear, you know. So what I'm gonna ask you guys is, you know, we can do these long soliloquies and sort of stuff, but it's gonna take us right back to the money. So I don't know which order was first. Howard and then David? Okay.
I really would like to clarify the fact that when we look at these alternatives, it's not a matter of do line seven and line eight. It's a matter of there's an availability to cut funds. This fund utilizes X amount of dollars. And I'll use it as an example. Sports athletics, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, I don't want revenue from students. I think, again, it should be, if it's available as an activity through the school, it's available as a free activity for the student, no payment. That doesn't mean get rid of seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. It means a little bit of cost containment. Share it. Why, if that budget were seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars and three-hundred-and-eighty-six... That's not draconian. That's not that drastic. It's a bummer. It's a lessening of the situation, but it is a reduction because we have fiscal constraints. My plee oes is look at your wallet for your budget. Don't look at your desires as much. If you can't afford it, you can't do it. And in terms of an increase of four-point-two-five percent, I'm not in favor of using the cap. I understand that we probably will have to use some of it, but I am not for using it, maxing it out. That's not the way to go. We need a little bit of cost containment. So, you know, when I see give and take, I don't say turn the lights out. I say dim them a little bit and give it a shot. Try it. We have a number of areas here that we could possibly utilize. Let's talk about that. And again, it's not, yes, we'll have a program or no, we won't have a program. It's can we reduce it slightly? Can we offset the amount of extra pay? No one really in this community bellyaches about another two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars of taxes. The bellyaching about the average seven thousand that they're already paying per year. And that's where the problem lies. So again, I'm not saying we have a panacea here to make it palatable to everyone. But I think that you have to consider the taxpayer on the one end. You have to consider the needs of the students on the other end. And I am all for as much sports, athletics, extracurricular as we can have. But maybe we just can't have quite as much.
Yeah, decimation and draconian are incredibly strong words. And nobody's suggesting that. I'll tell you why. You know, in the latest Bergen... You know, in the latest Bergen Record, right, it's $25,000 per. Okay, what's the number?
We don't know where they got that number, but we think it's closer to 17, eight, between 17 and 19, because it has reduced over the couple of years. We're researching it right now. I have a call into them. I just want to see what they put into the, but, but I know that's not, that's not your point, that doesn't speak to your-
Well, fair enough. I mean, I'd be hard to believe, hard pressed to believe it's that number, the 17, 18, but whatever the number is, it doesn't matter. So, here's the way I see it. You know, I went to Jamaica High School, you know, 30 kids a class. I mean, in New York City, public schools are dramatically different than where we are today. Facilities weren't any good, we didn't have the sports clubs, we didn't have any of that stuff. That's draconian, when you got peeling paint on the walls. Okay? So, the, the key to this is that we're not eliminating, okay? We're not in the Full Employment Act. And the problem is, and I keep coming back to negotiations, is that we can't afford the current wages and benefits. We pay, so, Clara, you keep talking about being a union supporter. You yourself said in TNEC, we pay a lot of money, and we can't afford that money. And the health benefits are not free. So, this year, it's 2.3% on the wages, there were some givebacks, and 1.6% on benefits, it's 3.9. It's 4% to 6% per year between year five and year 13. Nobody in the United States gets that. Okay? But that's embedded in the number. The other piece of it is, we talk about the outsourcing, and here's where, again, we could use the, the night shift as an example. But we want to compromise. We don't want to outsource. But what we have to do is look at all the non-classroom opportunities that exist, and if people price themselves out of the market. Our job is to provide a thorough and efficient education. Okay? In terms of the nurses, you know, this is the greatest job in the world, over $100,000 a year on average for 180 days. Compare that to any other nurse that's out there. They know it's a great job, right? And so, what we're saying is, we're going to have that, that, that skillset available for the children. So, we're not eliminating the job. What we're saying is, we may be transitioning from internal employees to an outsourced. You know, so that's a key takeaway. And then the third key point I'd like to make is, and again, and it's just a speechifying sort of thing, it's all about resource allocation. Classroom versus non-classroom. What's essential, what's not? What's our job, what's our responsibility in this regard? And then back to what David and Howard said, it's affordability question. What's a luxury and what's not? And the other thing is, you know, when I spend the money, I want to get a good return on some of that. And as we know, there's some issues in certain areas, you know, that we've talked about in terms of the engagement of the students, and, and some of the gaps that we have, and whatever else.
Um, I want to go back to the charging for extracurriculars and just sort of reiterate or express support for what Dr. Duguid said. We can't charge, obviously, our free and reduced lunch students, nor would I ever, even if we could ever want to do that. Um, and I, it's roughly 40% of our student body, as a round number, okay? So, it's, it's a large proportion of the students. But even so, I think, Dave, it's right that for the families that can afford, you know, rather than cut these activities, maybe we need to, and I realize administratively is another piece of this that I don't think people are aware of. Administratively, figuring out how to go about collecting that money and doing it in an efficient way is not, it's a tall order. But, that being said, whether we actually end up doing it this year, or feel like we have to the next year, I think it's something we need to really think through and figure out if there is an efficient way to do it. Because clearly, we can't afford everything at this point. We just can't. And, you know, there are amazing educational opportunities that we offer in the district, and I hate to see those go, so.
All right, before David goes, and then Clara, um, I want us to kind of focus this conversation a little bit. I, I numbered each one of these items here, and understanding that this is not a comprehensive list. I think, once Clara said her thing, she'll be the last one to sort of speak on this, in that we should go through each of these and get your opinion on each of these items here, so we can give some direction to, some clear direction to the finance committee. And David Gruber has put out on the table some other things that he wants to look at, the outsourcing of the day custodians, and some other things as well as that, and if you have similar things like that. Once again, these philosophical discussions are wonderful, and it's great, but at, at the end of the day, we need a decision as to where you stand, and putting your money where your mouth is, kind of thing. Yeah, David?
Okay. Um, I actually have some of those things. The, I tend to agree with David regarding the outsourcing of school nurses, as difficult as that is. I, I think we're largely overpaying for that. Uh, I absolutely disagree with, uh, cutting the funding of the roof replacements. I think that is, that is incredibly short-sighted, uh, and that, I think, I think that that would, that that would result in actually added expenses in terms of repairing the leaks that will occur, because the roofs have not been replaced. Uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of extracurriculars slash sports slash athletics, um, I would, it's hard to, it's hard to talk about a, uh, a small reduction in these without talking about reducing programs. And quite frankly, I'm not ready to talk about reducing or eliminating particular sports at this point, so that's not something that I would be in favor of. I would also absolutely oppose the eliminating surplus healthcare costs. Uh, I've actually read through some of the information on the Cadillac tax for Obamacare, and since that's sort, that's sort of my business as well, not to the same extent that it's David's business, but it's, I'm sort of in the same arena. That is a very real problem, and in fact, I think that the amount that we budgeted, budgeted for it may in fact be low. Um, I, um, so, that's, uh, that's sort of where I stand, uh, as far as those things go. I think that, that looking at outsourcing other personnel besides the ones that we have already put on here, at this point, is going to be extraordinarily difficult, because we don't have the bids to do that. I do think that, that we may well be talking about doing that next year, given the constraints that are in the budget for next year, and given that our surplus, our, um, our, um, bank cap, I'm, it's not bank, not bank cap, but given the excess surplus that we are likely to be able to put into, uh, the following year's budget is going to be minimal at best. And, uh, so I think we need to, uh, we may need to look at those things for the next, for the next school year. And the other, uh, the other thing that I'm going to say, and I realize this is not going to be a popular thing, but I actually am in favor, much as it pains me to say this, I'm in favor of going to the 4.25% cap, and I'll tell you why. Uh, even with the 4.25% cap, we are already talking about losing 10 teaching positions, losing, uh, 32 lunch aids, outsourcing 39 paraprofessionals, and losing three administrators. The, I think that we're getting perilously close to being able, to not being able to run the school district, based on what, what we have currently proposed, and, uh, and I think that one other thing that I want to point out is that, in fact, the total amount of the budget has really not changed more than about 1% in the last five years. Uh, the problem here is not the amount of money that's being spent, well, well, uh, it's not the amount of money that's being spent, it's the source of the revenue, or the, or lack of revenue that's coming in, and that's where, that's where we're having all of our major issues. And last, but certainly not least, um, we do have, we do have, going forward, some major issues in terms of salary structure, and in terms of benefits, and the, the, as I, as I said earlier, the Cadillac tax is very real, and it's going to hit districts like ours and many others in New Jersey very hard, because, in fact, the, the kind of benefit plans that we, that we offer are such that they're going to fall into this particular range. This is something that we are going to have to take on as a district. And, um, you know, we, we, we voted for a, we voted for funding raises for our staff, uh, and I will, I will actually second what, I think Clara said earlier, that I think teachers are underpaid. Uh, I, I'll, I'll quote Sarah here, and that is, "I wish that teachers were paid like investment bankers, and investment bankers were paid like teachers." But, uh, but that's not the way the world works, and, um, and the fact of the matter is that we cannot continue to fund the kind of salaries that, uh, and the kind of benefit packages that we have done traditionally for the last 30 years. It's simply not going to be a viable financial position to take, and I think, uh, I think certainly everybody up here on the board realizes that particular fact, but, uh, but it's staring us in the face now, and we really have got to deal with this.
Okay, actually, I want to thank you for being succinct about a number of things on here. And I just was taking some notes, and just wanted to see if I got you correctly. Um, I basically labeled the items here, one through 14, and added 15, which outsourced other bargaining groups, which was David Gruber's suggestion, and that you was not for, is what I got. And, uh, you are for the outsourcing of the nursing, nurses, and you are against the roof, uh, you're against, uh, removing the roof replacement, that we should do it, basically. And, um, you are against, at this time, the extracurricular activities being reduced.
That's correct.
Okay. And finally, you said eliminate surplus healthcare costs. I didn't get your position on that.
Uh, I think that we, I think that that needs to be in the budget. In fact, I think the amount that's in there may be low.
So, you say we should keep that?
Yes.
You're for, so you're against eliminating it?
Correct.
Okay, cool. What's that?
Just for clarification, I believe the Cadillac tax goes into effect in 2018.
Um, it's, I thought it's 2016 or 2017, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah.
I don't, 2018?
2018? Thank you. Yeah. So, um, as we sort of go on, Clara, you have your bit, but if you could kind of lock in some of those items that he just spoke about, that'd be great, so that we can get a consensus.
Well, my position hasn't changed.
From what?
From.
About what?
I think that we need to go up to cap.
Okay, cool.
Including bank cap.
So, you want the four and a quarter?
Yes. Um, I don't see us, first off, let's go over to the outsourcing. There's nothing left for us to outsource, other than the daytime custodians and the nurses. There is absolutely no group in this school district that's left to outsource. Oh, and audiovisual, but we're not talking about that.
Okay.
Okay? So, I'm just, I'm not for it. Um, again, having children and having friends that have children in the school district, I know what their concerns are, and I'm sure, as parents, you have, maybe, perhaps you would have some of the same concerns in the schools that your children attend. So, I'm not for outsourcing the nurses. I also want to put things in a sto, in a historical context, because we've inherited a lot of the higher salaries. We've also created, we also had, um, the environment, of the district environment was such that teachers and nurses and professionals wanted to stay. That's fine. And, you know, I think our, uh, the typical corporate move is to get rid of the people that have hung around for a long time, and replace them with younger, cheaper folks. That goes on everywhere. Um, but some of these professionals work well with our children, they know our children, they know our families, and I know that I would be more comfortable with keeping the nurses and replacing them through attrition. Extracurricular activities, that's, I'm sorry, that's part of the draw from, of TNEC.
So, you want to keep that?
I want to keep that.
All right.
The roof maintenance of the facility is paramount.
So, you want to keep that?
I want to keep that.
All right. Outsourcing of nurses?
I don't want, I don't want to institute that.
No, she said there was nothing else, so you don't, you're against that?
Yes.
Okay.
Through attrition, though. Through attrition.
So, what do I do with that? Is that like, I'm putting down plus or minus, so I shouldn't put a minus slash plus?
Yes.
We're trying to move this.
Okay. And, um, additional administrator positions, we're already outsourcing, I mean, we're already reducing 10 teaching positions, we're eliminating some programs that are not, it's not indicated on here. You know?
So, you're against that?
I'm against it.
Okay. That's number nine, if you count.
I don't think there's anything. And, and I also, if we, we've, we find ourselves in this position because we've been extremely conservative over the last three years, and if we don't use this bank cap, it's gone forever, part of it, not all of it, but most of it, it's gone forever, and then we will really be scrambling to try to make up that difference in future years.
What about the elimination of the surplus healthcare costs?
I'm not real, I, I'm not very familiar with that, so I'm-
Neither am I.
I'm going to leave that.
David, you say you're against it, and what's, what's the ramifications of that?
Um, the ramifications are that, uh, that I think we, we don't know the exact impact of, of that on the budget. I think we need to have some funds in the budget to-
I see, okay.
To deal with that particular issue.
To be able to pay it if we, if the, something kicks in?
Right.
Okay, it's like our surplus, but for healthcare. Now, is that clear to you? So, you're for it, against it? Keeping it, okay.
I might be able to clarify some of that.
Okay.
I think I can clarify-
So, you're against eliminating it?
-that money, but I may be wrong, and just tell me if I am. I think that we put that, I believe that we put that in the budget, because we know, and I believe it's for next year, that if we have, um, people who work more than three days a week, substitutes who work more than three days a week, that we will start to have to pay healthcare. Now, if that's 2018, it's, it's our understanding that, that we'll have to start, we'll have to start to look at that. So, we thought we better have a cushion for that. We don't intend to, to do that. We are going to try to keep our personnel records right and tight, but we can look into that and be definite about what that is for, for the next meeting. But I believe that that's what it is. It really didn't have anything to do with the Cadillac tax.
So, the Cadillac tax, 2018, so I think that could save us some money. In terms of the, the work requirements, my understanding is it's more than 30 hours a week? So, if you're doing three times seven, it's 21 or 24 hours a week, so that wouldn't necessarily qualify, unless there's a, there may be a union adjustment or something that you got to look into, but my understanding is it's 30 hours a week.
Yeah, we'll look into that, because I heard something different, so we'll, we'll have to just, uh, it'd be great if we don't have to budget for it.
Okay, well, we got David. So, you're against the four and a quarter, with an exclamation point, right?
Yeah, so-
Okay, wait, 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 okay, because, um, then that means that you are for all of these cuts here?
No.
Okay, I'm just asking, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, let me just, a couple of comments, just to clarify where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Is, we didn't inherit, not everybody on this board inherited all the higher salaries. Okay, so I just want to say, we made a decision, and we voted for the last contract. Okay? So, again, the accountability, it's a resource allocation decision, I just want to make sure that we're aware we're part of the issue. Okay? The second key point is, you know, we have been conservative, but we've been working through the budget-
through the budgeted fund balance. So our spending is higher than the tax increase, right, from a spending standpoint, but it wasn't at the expense of the taxpayers. But we were spending some money, and that was strategically intentional to wipe down the budgeted fund balance, and now we're getting to dangerous and precarious levels. Okay? At $250,000, I'm really concerned about that. So between a rock and a hard place. Now, in terms of, let's go through the individual items, because right now I haven't heard anybody on the board yet go through the full list and how we get there, right? So people are cherry picking one or two items and say what they agree and disagree with, but if you take one out, you've got to put something else in, right? I mean, that's what we're dealing with, that's the reality, so I'd love to hear the full menu. So from my perspective, the breakage from retirement is a no-brainer, it's in, right? You know, and again, I look at, and these are things I don't want to do necessarily, okay? But I would say that the nurses, I'm in favor of, because I think there's a huge savings there, I know the relationships are there, but I also know the comp levels are way over what should be. It's not replacement, it's not elimination, it's replacement. In terms of the administrative positions, again, we don't want to do that, but I think we have no choice, we have to find the money.
So you're for both of those?
I'm for both of those, yeah, and I just
Okay, okay.
I rely on Barbara's judgment in this regard. You know, in terms of the non-public routes, I think there has to be some sort of cutback, but not the way it's been proposed, so
Where are you looking at? I'm sorry.
So I'm going through the whole list, reduce non-
No, I am too, but I got a neighbor here.
I'm going bottom, so I'm going bottom.
Wait, 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 because you're jumping around too.
Well, all right, I'm going bottom.
Okay, could you all do me a favor?
Go top down?
Number it one through 14, and then call your number, and then I can follow you, because I'm trying to keep track.
No, that's fine. So I'm going to go in sequence from the top down. Is that easier?
Okay, cool.
Okay. So, you know, one is an obvious one, everybody takes that.
Yeah.
Two is, for 32 positions, it's not a lot of money, but I don't think, I don't know if we have a choice, so in terms of numbers two and three, you know, the Paris is the one that I get some angst on in that regard, but I don't know if we have a choice in that regard, especially, you know, the funding of the LRAs, yeah, I would do that as well. Fund 30%, so I would go, I would check the first three. The next one, again, you know, I mean, here's a key point, is that, you know, not everybody's terrific. I mean, is there any way where we could kind of hold on to the best performers in this regard? I mean, there are some who are really outstanding, so I'm not sure I support kind of the wholesale reduction, but are there some that we could kind of pick out and say, look, these guys are great, and they should be rewarded as such, in that regard? You know, the teaching positions, again, we need to get a lot of money, I don't think we have a lot of choice. The courtesy busing, again, it's one of those things you have to do, the non-public routes, you know, I think there has to be some sort of cutbacks, but not the way it's been proposed in terms of the consolidation, and I think you have to get the schools engaged in that regard.
You're going to help us with that, because that's been a challenge, you know that?
Yeah, no, I understand that, but, you know, and I think
I won't belabor it, but, yeah, okay.
You know, I think that's fair, I mean, look, there's going to be shared pain here. Again, the administrative, so I'm really supporting everything.
So I just want to back up, so you're for number six, reduce non-public routes, but just not the format? Is that like a plus-minus thing, like with Clara, or is that like a plus or a minus?
No, I would say that, I don't know what the amount is till we work it through. So there's some amount in there, don't know what the amount is.
Okay.
But I think what has to be considered is the safety, number one.
Always, and that's a given.
You know, and the proposed that was made was totally unacceptable.
Okay, we know that, okay, but
So something, I don't know
So how do you feel right now about this? I mean, just for today.
Yeah, so I think there has to be some sort of shared sacrifice.
What does that mean?
That means, I don't know, it means probably 50 to 100K in that range, I don't know. This is one of those things, I don't have a dollar amount. So what I'm saying is, if you, the question is, is there, do you think there's a need for at least some consolidation? You know, I would say there's an opportunity to reduce a few of the bus routes, I don't know what that leads to.
Okay, I'm going to say something to you, okay, and I'm going to let this go on, because you were very quick with the courtesy busing, because there's safety issues there as well, but a different type, and here you're sort of vacillating back and forth about the some concern.
Well, on the courtesy busing for the youngest children, again, I would say that there may be, we may not have to eliminate all that. I know, I'm concerned, you're absolutely correct.
All right, okay.
So I put them in the same bucket. The one concern I have is in the charter school, the courtesy busing worked out to $2,000 a head.
Mm-hmm.
And it didn't make any sense to me, so you have half the saving there, it was 208.7, at 885 is the Aiden Lou, gives you 1,200 bucks a head, times 87, gives you $120,000 right there.
So I'll tell you what, I'm going to bring another similar question mark on this, because I still
That's fine, no, that's fair.
Okay.
And you could put a little question mark in the Paris, in terms of not all, but some.
Okay.
And so what that means is, I'm short a bit, right, so then I have to go to the bottom part, right? And then on the bottom part, I think, I agree with David, we can, we've got to do the roof.
Okay, good.
The surplus healthcare costs, I don't think we need that for the Cadillac tax, and I know, and it's the hourly thing, I believe it's 30 hours.
What about the extracurricular? You skipped that.
Which one?
Extracurricular?
Yeah, so I got to see what the gap is, in terms of to say, if we have to get X amount of dollars, you know, I am not in favor of wholesale reductions.
So question mark.
But targeted
Do you need more information?
More info, what does it mean in that regard? Because again, the way I look at this is, you can't say, I like this, and I don't like this, we have a target we have to attain. In terms of the amount of the increase, you know, people are talking four and a quarter, I'm comfortable with 2%, and, you know, perhaps a little bit higher, if absolutely necessary. But what I'd like to see is, not only this year, but I think as part of this budget process, we have to talk about next year as well.
Absolutely.
In the sense that, because with the outsourcing, our biggest problem is labor, salaries and wages, our healthcare benefits are way out of control, 11%, it's going up 14, 15 next year, and that's money out of the school budget.
Through that. Okay, I just wanted to say, so, wait a minute, reducing sports and extracurricular, so that's a question mark for you?
I would say I'm biased towards less is more. So I'm saying is, I call that a gap filler if we need to.
Okay, so I'm going to put a question mark.
It's a question mark, but I'm not saying wholesale reduction.
All right.
I'm saying careful if possible, I don't know what we need.
Okay.
So
And how about to eliminate the surplus healthcare costs?
I would just, I would eliminate that, because again, I have some degree of confidence it's a 30-hour rule.
Okay, so you're cool with
But I could be wrong.
All right, cool.
I misspoke, it's, if they work more than three days, and that's where we have, we have to be prepared, I believe, we believed, that we have to be prepared in case we slip up and have somebody work more than, more for a long, yeah.
Yeah, but
Long-term subs, too.
It's not three days, it's 30 hours per week, and then what you have to do, and the way it works, is you could average it over time, and that's how the law is written. So perhaps, my guess is, the number is smaller, would be my guess, based on that redefinition. So why don't we take a closer look at it? But my guess is you have at least 100,000 there that goes into the pop.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a point of clarification, Mr. Funapple. The courtesy busing, we're not talking about eliminating pre-K and K.
Okay. Looking at the sheet here, we're looking at $5,677,000 in total amount, it's a lot of I will be consistent with my message, again, you know, I would rather we continue to reduce in areas that do not have an impact or direct impact on the education of our students, that to me are areas number one, two Well, you want it quick, right? So That's okay, that's okay. One, two, three, six and seven, which are the busing items.
So these are things you're for or you're
Four.
Okay, we eliminate courtesy busing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we
That
130% and we do the outsourcing of lunch aids?
Yeah, again, again, one, two, three, six, seven, that brings us to 1.2, $1,227,000 right there.
One, two, three, six, seven, that's it?
Yeah, but that's $1,227,000 in cuts that, you know, may force us not to use a full cap. However, I'm also willing to look at the nurses, as long as we able to do some due diligence in terms of, you know, the, putting us in a compromised position, you know, whether it's going to cost us
Only if we need it.
Only if we need it. Well, only if we know that if something's not going to come back and haunt us, you know, from a legal perspective.
We need to work it out.
Exactly. And then eliminate the surplus healthcare.
You're for that?
I'm for that, but again, we need to look at that a little closer, perhaps we can look at the number of, the number of long-term subs that have worked, the number of hours worked in the last
So get a better number on it, yeah.
Three or four years, to get an average, and then use it as a baseline.
Okay.
So that increases the line to $1,718,000.
Okay. So then, all the other items which you've not spoken about
Should remain because
Remain intact.
They have a direct impact on the education of our students, as far as I'm concerned.
How much do we need? It's not 5.6, I mean, that doesn't make 5.6.
Yes, yes, yes. No, it's not.
No, I understand.
Add up everything, 5.6.
No, I get it.
Well, add them up.
Okay, are we done with yours?
Do you hear everything?
I had a dual conversation, my apologies. But go ahead, could you repeat it again?
Where, where, where did you left off?
I left off that, everything that you did not speak about, you feel that should not be cut.
Exactly, because again, to me, has a direct, have a direct impact on the education
Okay, so then that sounds like you're not for going to the four and a quarter percent.
Exactly. If we're able to tap into those areas there, then there's no need to go into the 4.25.
Okay.
There's no need to use a bank cap, basically.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to explain that with the cuts that we proposed, or that we recommended reluctantly, and then put back in the busing, Dennis, Dr. Funapple showed a way to put back in courtesy and non-public, the bus reductions, the one, you know, both because of safety, we had $2.8 million in cuts to begin with, reductions to begin with, including the outsourcing. So if you're not taking all of the top number out, you're going beyond bank cap.
2.8 to get to 4.25.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We've talked about it so much, it gets
So you want to think about some more?
No, no, listen, if we have to
We've got to be whittling away, okay, cool.
We're going to need to negotiate all this, since
All right, so, David?
I just want to clarify, because, for just the reason that Barbara just mentioned, for the ones that I, I'd said before that I was in favor of 10, and not in favor of basically 11 through, 11, 12 and 13, I was in, actually, 11 through 14, one and five, one through five to me were a given. And I'm also in favor of eight reluctantly. I am No, no, that's a, that's a plus.
And 10.
And 10.
Yeah, I got 10.
Okay, and
11 you are against, and 12 you are against, and I have nothing for 13, so
13, I'm against for this year, I think we have to seriously look at that for next year. And 14, I'm plus-minus on.
Right, okay. Oh, plus-minus, it was plus before. See, this, we evolved, but that's okay, we have quota records.
Sarah?
Yes. All right, I'll go down the list. I was going to try to be crisp, if you want slow, I'll give you slow.
Slowly, not slow.
Okay. One through five, yes, with apprehensions about four and five, but yes. No to six and seven. No to number nine. Yes to number 10. No to 11. 12 and 13, I'd like us to really evaluate for next year, but I don't think we can do it in this budget, I don't think we, I think we have to really look at the getting parents to contribute and how we could structure that so that it would work.
12 and 13?
Yeah.
A question, okay, cool.
And 14, I think we just have to look at, it sounds like we aren't absolutely sure whether we need that money or not, so I
We need the money, well, actually, I think we do need the money, is that correct?
I thought so, but, you know, that's some sort of
Okay, well, I think the question is how much we need, I think is what we're talking about.
All right.
So we need the money, but how much?
Okay.
Okay? But you're for that, is that okay?
If we need the money, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, cool. Yep?
Additional outsourcing?
Oh, yeah, additional outsourcing, number 15, that's our
Oh, that
Add-on, that was an add-on.
Okay, that's
Yeah.
Dr. Gruber's add-on.
That's Gruberism.
A Gruber. I think we have to look at it.
Okay.
I'm kind of a plus-minus on it.
Okay, cool.
I don't think we have time to really get our full information for this budget, it's similar to the, to the extracur, you know, getting parents to fund extracurricular and athletics, I think we need to do more research, but at some point, we're probably going to have to, so
I think that's a big challenge here with some of the things that we're proposing, particularly with the outsourcing and also with the payment. This has been a discussion in the policy committee, and we were trying to come up with a game plan, actually, we did come up with a straw man or a straw woman sort of structure on how to do that, but the implementation, the follow-through, and then how much administrator or human capital are we going to have to invest to get the money, and then how much ranker is it going to cost to sort of have this transition in? You know, so all of that sort of plays into this. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go with the items that I am for first. I will do number one. Number two, the outsourcing of the lunch aids. Number three. Number six and number seven, if we can possibly look at them a little more closely, and see if there's any other way we can configure that. Number eight, like somebody else said very reluctantly, I hate to get rid of administrators, however, it may have to happen. Number 14, and that's it, for the ones that I am for.
Okay, cool.
And then the remaining ones, number four, five, I lost track now, nine, 10
Uh, run out of space.
11, 12, 13, I am against, and 15, if we're talking specifically about outsourcing of day custodians, I'm against it. If we're talking about other groups as well, then, until we actually figure out who those other groups are, I really can't vote on that one.
Is a plus-minus okay for that?
That's fine.
Or minus-plus, maybe, you're down on it?
Minus-plus.
Okay?
That's fine.
Cool. You could do it if you know who's being it done to?
Correct.
Okay. All right, cool.
Moving around?
Moving around.
Okay, so, including bank cap, which is what we had originally, items one through eight, I'm in favor, only in favor of the courtesy busing and the non-public route, simply because it appeared that once the routes were actually bid, that they were, from what Dr. Funapple explained to us, that we could find funding for that.
I'm sorry, which one, I'm sorry?
Items six and seven.
Six and seven.
So I'm looking at
So you're for?
Right, I'm looking at items one through eight, which were already inclusive of the 4.2
2.8, right.
Total, in terms of using the bank cap. So those items, I'm in favor. You know, each of them have their issues and concerns, you know, outsourcing the paraprofessionals.
I'm sorry, so you're for 1 through 8, or?
Yes, 1 through, items 1 through 8.
Okay, you're for.
And I just want to point out that again, that those were already inclusive of going to bank cap.
Okay.
Because anything in addition or less than that means that you can't reduce bank cap if you're going to have, you know, in favor of some of the others.
Okay, so all those are 4.
Right.
1 through 8, and so now 9 and through the 14, 15.
Not necessarily, already reducing 3 positions of administrators, so not interested in reducing any further.
So you're against number 1?
And not in favor of that, not in favor of outsourcing our school nurses, because we have a number of students that are diabetics, juvenile diabetes and other health issues, our nurses know our students, I would be in favor of keeping our nurses, if necessary, through attrition, we could possibly eliminate those positions, but I would like to do that as people get to know our students, especially those with health concerns. Making sure that we take care of our capital expenditures, including the roofs, not interested in
So you want the roof?
Yep.
Okay, so we're against that, okay.
Yep. And all the other items, in terms of the healthcare
Oh, how about 12 and 13?
Keeping that, keeping that, again, all of these items
So you're against that?
I'm against that.
Okay.
But I think there's just the simple fact that these items make the list, whether they get cut this year or next year, these are items that will always remain on the list as we talked about in the last meeting, so whether we bite the bullet this year or next year, it's just kicking the can, these are things that we will continuously have to look at, the elimination
So 12 and 13, you don't want to
12 and 13, not in favor of reducing at this current time.
Okay, number 14?
Item number 14, the point about the surplus, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the surplus healthcare costs, even on our agenda item, item number 229, we have 7 positions, 3 of which are personal leaves, which are basically the full year, so you're talking about long-term subs for the course of a year, so you would be looking at expenses of more than 30 hours, so if you were required to cover healthcare expenses, you have to build that in at some point in time, so I think that it behooves us to be, you know, preparing for that, and I'm with David, and that that probably is a low figure, so I think we do need that. Not in favor at this time of additional outsourcing, but of course, that's going to remain on the table. Worst-case scenario, if we did have to have further reductions, I would look back again at the courtesy busing and reducing the non-public routes if that was a concern, because to Sebastian's point, that there are items that are far removed from the classroom, so if we weren't going to bank cap, then those would be the areas that I would be looking at.
So she, did you get her on busing because she, that she did not, she wanted to go with the proposal?
Yeah.
I asked Dr. Walser if he understood, and if I, I'm asking Mrs. Rice if I understand, she was, I think you were in favor of what we proposed, how to put the busing back?
Correct, because I believed Dr. Fronappel mentioned
All right, so you're really against was here? The limiting of the courtesy busing, because of the, this won't be necessary with what he did.
Correct.
So she's against eliminating of courtesy busing?
Correct. But my point being that if we were to not go to bank cap, those would be some of the items that I would first look at, simply because they're non-classroom items, so those would be some of the first, on the first part of the list.
Okay, all right. Okay, cool. Howard?
Thank you for your patience, I know it's, you know, isn't this exciting, like watching grass grow, or golf? Oh, we've got a lot of golfers out there.
Regarding number 1, yes, number 2, yes, number 3, yes.
Whoa, 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 okay, don't show off now. Okay, number 1, yes, okay.
Number 2, yes. 3, yes. 4, yes. 5, yes. Courtesy busing, I'd like a halfway measure, you know, I keep seeing that we're going to go from here to here, and I'd like the middle point on something like that.
So that's like a plus minus?
Plus minus.
Okay.
You know, yeah, because you know, that's what we were planning to do over the last couple of years, and we seem to have been doing it and accomplishing and getting towards a goal with that, we should keep going in that direction. Reducing non-public bus routes, the problem I have is that I would like to see a reduction in the cost of non-public bus costs. My understanding is that there is no way of merely reducing it a small level and getting a savings.
Yeah, I'm
In order to get any kind of a savings, it has to be drastic, and if it's drastic, I'm not for it.
Right.
I don't want 4 bus stops, if we, I think I used the last time the example, if we had, whatever the number is, if we had 85 bus stops, I'd like it to go down to 75.
Okay, we got that plan?
I don't want to go from 85 to 4.
Okay, cool, so that's, so you're against that?
No. I'm for a cut, and I'd like to find a cut some other way, to find out, even though I'm told, gee, I don't see how we can do it, I'd like that researched more. It's hard for me to believe that you can't diminish a service, and that you have to almost kill it, I'm not looking to put a knife in it, I'm really looking to
Okay, could you unpack that for me into a succinct sort of thing, are you saying
Yeah, let's reduce it, but not, but
So it's like a plus minus?
No, it's a plus, let's reduce it, but let's do it a right way, not a wrong way.
Okay, okay. So that's a plus, okay.
Reduce the administrative positions, yes. Reduce additional, I would say here again, I'm not looking to reduce 3 additional positions, but let's go with 1 position.
Right.
$100,000 is a large amount of money when we're looking at $1,008,000. Outsource school nurses through attrition.
So you're for it, okay.
Bryant School, no, you don't hold the building open when it's leaking, and if we don't do the roof replacements, that's a necessity.
So you're saying
I'm saying no, don't reduce roof Extracurricular? I'm not looking at a reduction of $227,000, I'm looking at a reduction of 25, 45, whatever it may be.
So you don't like this here?
So yes, I want a reduction, I don't want that much of a reduction.
Okay.
Same thing with the sports programs and athletics. Again, 761 is a large figure to work with, and if we're looking at a cut of 25, 35, 40,000, yes, it's an impact, it's not turning it off. Healthcare costs, what I'm hearing right now is we're not sure about healthcare costs and what the impact is, and we need a little more information, and then I'm also hearing the fact that, well, you know, if we don't have the administrative wherewithal to track it correctly, all of a sudden we have that expense, so I don't look at that as a rationale, let's provide money in case there's a problem and something's a little messed up, shouldn't be messed up, we should be tracking it, we should be tracking it, if not daily, pretty close to it. So yes, I want to eliminate it. If you think there's a fallback number that we need, absolutely, because we have positions in the pipeline that are not, that are going to be replaced because people are leaving, isn't that already budgeted in with the former person who's leaving salary?
What, you're talking about the breakage?
I'm talking, it was just mentioned by, was it Clara?
The need for health, you're talking about, you're talking about the
The excess healthcare costs, yeah.
Javon was making the point that we have a bunch of folks who are going to be subbing, and so they're going to be here for long term, and so they need that money.
But aren't they subbing for people who are in the budget already?
Yeah, but you have to pay healthcare for these folks, though. Like if someone goes on leave, you have to substitute, so it's additional cost.
Leave, okay, so it's long-term subbing, and long-term subbing can't be done with 2 people 15 hours a week instead of 1 person 30 hours a week.
You are proposing that, you?
No, no, not me.
Are proposing that?
Not me.
All right, watch it now, I'm watching you.
Thank you. I need you at my back, not at my throat.
Hugs and kisses, man.
So maybe a little more research on this healthcare cost, because I'm hearing 2 sides of the same issue, that
Well, let me just say this, okay, what we're saying here is that they were proposing to put this in the budget, sort of anticipating that we will have long-term substitute, if we don't have it in the budget, we're going to have an issue, we're going to have to pull it from someplace else to make sure that those people are covered, and so this is a security bracket. David Gruber's point was that, is it this much, so he said we need a better number, is this the number?
I go with that.
That's a
I go with that.
Okay, so are you against this? At least in, as a process, maybe not this number, but some number.
I'm for eliminating some number, I don't know what the number is, yes.
All right, so you're for it? Against eliminating it? Okay, cool. Now, for me?
No, no, for eliminating it partially.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
He said he was for attrition of outsourcing the nurses, did you get that, or did you say
Uh, let me see.
Through attrition.
Okay, let me see, nursing, nursing, nursing.
Also, and also number 15?
Right, okay.
I'd like a lot more information as to what the possibilities are, I've heard so far, possible day workers for custodian, I've heard possible that there's others, and I don't know who, text, whatever.
Okay. All right, so going back to the nursing, I wrote down that you were for outsourcing the nursing, is that accurate?
By attrition.
By attrition, okay, I don't have all that nuanced stuff, but okay, I mean, it's giving us something to work with.
Yes.
What I did not get from folks, and I'll start with myself, I am for the 4.25%, and I think the one thing that came out of this is that we need kind of, someone to kind of work through some of these issues here in terms of exactly what's going to be cut, and what impact that's going to happen, I don't know if we can do that here in a meeting with the all 9 of us, but with this instruction, we give back to the finance committee, let them wrestle that devil down, and then come back to us with a full report as the pros and cons of doing that sort of thing. So what I would like from folks is to find out explicitly who is for the 4.25%, understanding that with that, we still have, well, how much was the cuts?
2.8 million.
2.8, 2.8 million dollars, so I'm going to go around the table, actually, I have, David is for it, I have, who's CW, that's, Clara Williams is for it, did I make an error here? Oh, David Gruber is not for that, exclamation point, cool. SR, Sebastian is not. Okay. Javon is for
Yeah, but I was kind of
Okay, so plus minus, minus plus?
Yeah.
All right, ACDC?
Let's call it equivocable.
Okay, cool, 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 cool. Howard?
I am for a lesser amount than 4.25, absolutely.
What's your number, David, give us a number.
2 plus 2 is bad.
What does that mean?
Let's look, let's look instead of, let's look at, instead of 4.25, let's look at it at a max of 3.
Okay. I want to ask how you came to that number, but that's okay.
It's a random one.
Okay, it's a random, okay, fair enough. Javon, did I have you already? Yeah, Javon is for this, okay, yeah. Do I have Clara, yeah, Clara, I have, Shelley, I have, she, you're sort of ACDC, oh, no, oh, Shelley Rowell, SW, I got W, S, R, okay. You're for it, okay? And, okay. All right, cool, so basically, we're doing the 4.25, so that's the instructions to the finance committee, thus says the board. Now, we got to work out the devil, which is in the details. Now, hearing what David said, in terms of looking down the road, these next sequence of negotiations ought to be very, very difficult, so I'm just putting it out there, for all the bargaining units, it ain't that we don't like you, it's not that we're threatening you, we're not going to have the money, we're just not going to have it. Even with this, our surplus is very, very low, and that's if nothing happens, and unfortunately, we have not been fortunate, everything seems to be happening to us, but we got a bunch of strong folks here. So any other questions about the budget here? Are we all comfortable? Are we transparent? Are we good? Okay, for those of you in the audience, just for clarity's sake, we don't normally engage, well, we don't like to engage in the back and forth, but I know a lot of you sat here patiently, want to ask some questions, we're going to spend about 20 minutes to have Dr. Fronappel sort of address some of your questions about, for clarity's sake. If you want more information about that, or have a deeper conversation, I would invite you to come to conversations with the board before the regular public meeting, where we're actually on the floor at 7:30, and you can ask us any question that you want, also, I want to invite you to go to Sundays with the superintendent, where you can get down to the real nitty-gritty, this is not really the platform to kind of get in the back and forth about that. So we're going to sort of have this segue into our part of the meeting where we have audience participation, where you can ask about things that are on the agenda, and this is on the agenda, and we'd like for you to step up to the podium, give your name, we'll give you 3 minutes, and we're not going to go back and forth, we're going to try to write down your questions, and see if we can get back to you with that, okay? Uh-oh, technical difficulty.
My name is Zev Derrick, Johnson Avenue, I have a few questions. The roof of 261,829,000, that, it listed as financing that, and the first payment was that amount, the question is, what is the total amount for the roof, and how many years is that financed across? Next question is that on April 1st, Dr. Fronappel presented the reduction of 95,000 from administrative costs, 23,000 from employee benefits, and 199,000 from capital outlay, for a total of 317,200. None of those cuts were presented on any of the slides tonight, so the question is, how does that fit into the budget? In addition, the, at the April 1st workshop meeting, Dr. Fronappel presented that the routes for the non-public busing came back with a savings of 71,000 for lesser, lesser costs on bids, and a savings of 124,000, I'm not sure how that worked out for 97 students who were being bused instead of, in lieu of payment, so I'm not sure if that 124 is a total or separate from the 71. And the third question is, there's nothing on the revenue list and about the solar panels or anything on the update on that, those were supposed to be a revenue generating item, and have not yet been fixed to generate revenue, so I was wondering what the status on that, and how that could impact the budget. Thank you very much.
Did we get all that?
Hi, I'm Steve Gruber, and I have a couple of questions for you, and one is, Dr. Fronappel, you quoted CPI at being 1.4%, while in the audience, I looked it up online, and year end, ending February 2015, is 0.0%, that means no increase. So if you budget for the 1.4%, I don't think you really have to. In addition, I look at your budgets and stuff, and I see week after week, you have people whose salaries are 1 times, and then you agree to increase them to 1.2 times their salary, however, when somebody is earning $50,000, you give them 1.2, that's an extra 10,000, somebody is earning 120,000, you give them 1.2, that's costing us an extra $30,000 a year, something like that. I think we should cap overtime at one rate, or maybe give it to the lower salaried individuals, and I used to have a boss who said that if you can't do the work in the amount of time given to you, you are either underqualified or incapable of doing your job. So it's one or the other, so you either need more people filling the roles and not paying overtime at an absurd rate, you know, at the lower end, or, you know, you got to look elsewhere. David Gruber mentioned, he grew up in Jamaica, class size of 30 students, I'm not saying we need to go to that, but I'm sure most of you had class sizes of 28 to 30 students, I don't know what the class size is in the schools, my guess is it's somewhere, can someone answer that? I mean, is it 17 kids per teacher, is it 22, is it 28? Because according to the New Jersey Bergen, whatever in the newspaper, was 25,000, obviously you're quoting that it should be 17, 18,000, and obviously, there is a ratio of teachers to students that is reasonable, I don't know what the state mandates, what they require, what is reasonable, but I think that's something that you should investigate and discuss with the audience, and we should be made aware of this. I'll also mention that I think Clara mentioned the draw to TNEC of our great schools, well, I will tell you, the high tax rate is an anti-draw to TNEC, so if you want people to come to TNEC, you got to keep the rates reasonable. So I don't know which way, how you could play both sides of the fence, but I'd like to be you, pay low taxes and have a draw of great schools, but it doesn't work both ways. Regarding schools' extracurricular activities, well, you call them extracurricular activities, you don't call them required activities. So if you're looking at students, what they need for education, they need math, they need writing, they need science, extra is by definition extra. When I go to the supermarket and I buy orange juice, and I don't have money, and I'm poor, I buy ShopRite brand orange juice, I don't go and buy Minute Maid or Tropicana. You make choices, the extra, you can't always get the extra, you choose what you need, and that's the math, you need the writing, you need the science. You don't need the football team, it's great to have, and I think we should have the football team, but having a badminton of 5 people, I don't know if you have such a thing, is kind of a bit ridiculous. So there are choices to be made there, and ways of limiting it. I will also add that you have a 4.25% cap.
I think your time is up, but go ahead, finish your statement, finish your line.
There's only 2 more people, so I think you could bear with me.
I think you need to follow the 3-minute rule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a 4.25% cap, and you want to use it, that's great, you use it, the problems will still exist a year from now, so you need to start looking ahead and dealing with it, instead of just increasing and then dealing with it. And then your goals, you know, you mentioned public school and
Okay, I think you moved on a little bit now.
You mentioned the public school busing, what about public school busing and consolidating those, as well as the private school busing? I think fair is fair on both ends.
Thank you very much.
Keith Kaplan, TNEC. One thing, you know, transparency is mentioned here a lot, and I would appreciate if the agendas could be made available a little earlier. I compliment you on your alert system, it's a wonderful system, it gives people information about whenever things are posted to the website, but this agenda did not get posted until 1:30 in the afternoon, and with only a couple hours on a very busy day for me, I did not have the time to give it the attention I really would have liked. I really would have liked before I came in here. Clara Williams mentioned, you know, teachers and a lot about them. And I think especially after her comments last week, she would have given the full context. Because teachers in countries like Finland and other countries at the top of the OECD do things a bit differently than we do. They do give the perks that you were talking about. But one of the things they also do is make sure that those teachers have extremely tough requirements before they ever get into a classroom. They have mentoring requirements. They have requirements to be trained in their specific subjects. And they would never give tenure as quickly as our schools do. So if you want to give all the benefits that teachers in Europe have, I would applaud you and I would be absolutely on board if you get behind the strict measures so that schools in America wouldn't have to go and try to find bad teachers because they don't let them in the front door. You know, you said we inherited higher salaries and that teachers want to stay, and that's fine. And that's great that teachers want to stay. But at a certain point, one of the things that those European countries do is they have master teachers apprentice younger teachers. And if you don't have new teachers coming in at the same rate as old teachers are going out, and you have older teachers sticking around, you wind up getting a bottleneck, which is bad, not only for salaries and benefits, because the next town over gets 20% higher on every single level of the pay scale throughout the teacher's career here. TNEC teacher is getting a higher salary. But when those people wind up retiring en masse, you don't have the educated and masterful teachers that we do currently have in the schools to go and help those new teachers. So I really think you need to reconsider that. You know, talking about replacing the staff. If you're talking about six nurses, and the nurses could be paid less, why don't we ask those nurses if they're willing to take the give-backs? Have we been offering all of these positions to these people saying, you know what, we might hire other people? Maybe those other people can be you. But simply that those salaries aren't possible. The Cap Bank, I really want to speak to because right now we are pushing off the problem to next year. And there's been no discussion of what a 2% budget would actually look like. You put a lot of choices up, but these aren't the only choices. And choices in long-term planning involve contracts, which at least one member on this Board has been talking about a lot. But we have the same situation next year. We have the contractual obligations. We have services. We have all these things that are going up. And if I could just mention one last thing. You know, you talked about the surplus healthcare costs. Staples had an answer to this problem. They said anyone who works more than 27 hours is fired. Now, I'm not sure we want to go anywhere that drastic. But if the issue is that working more than a certain number of hours leads to healthcare costs, the answer is, you don't work more than that number of hours.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
By the way, if you ever come by our Board on the Planning Board, I'll give you much more than your three minutes.
Okay. We're not as generous.
Good evening. Toni Neuwitz, TNEC resident and class of 1970, TNEC High School. I would just like to comment on a few of these items which were justified because of the consequences of not doing them, such as the roof. That it's important to do the roof, it's important to include it because of the consequences of not doing it. I'd like to take that same line of reasoning and apply it to the non-public busing. If we do cut the non-public busing, what will the environmental consequence be? What will the safety consequence be? And what will those costs be? And then we have to measure, we have to compare apples to apples and compare what the ancillary, you know, what the other costs might be that will incur as a consequence of cutting the busing. And then come up with a realistic figure and see if that really is ultimately worth that. As far as the nursing staff, I appreciate that our nurses understand our students. But I'd like to believe that any nurse coming in who hasn't necessarily been with the student population for many years would understand what a diabetic student needs, would understand what certain other medical conditions would require. And if she can't, then she shouldn't be a nurse. So I really think that justifying the nurses' salaries because of their familiarity with the student population is a kind of weak argument. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Dove Fisher, TNEC resident. I only want to address one issue, is the busing issues. You talk a lot about what has to go on within the school and then extracurricular after the school. If the kids can't physically get to the school, then that's a big issue. I come from, I work, my wife works. There's no way that we are going to be home at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock to pick up our kids, who are in second grade, third grade, off of the bus if it's eight blocks away or even nine blocks away or a mile and a half away. If they are not closer to three blocks away from us, I cannot have my nanny, who unfortunately is the one who has to provide for our children because we have to earn the salaries to pay the taxes in this community. We cannot live here. So I'm telling you that we have to get our kids to school. What goes on in the school is great, and it should be awesome. And what happens after school should be awesome as well. But let's get our priorities straight to get them to the school first. Thanks.
Deborah Blaiver, TNEC resident. I'm unfamiliar with a lot of you, and I was wondering if you would possibly put your bios on the website so that those of us who do not know who the Finance Committee are or Board of Ed could get to know you all a bit better so we understand where you're coming from and what your backgrounds are. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Go ahead, I'm serious. That's okay, take it easy, guys. But you're going to be crisp, right?
Crisp.
Okay.
I did have one question. If, well, two parts. What happens when you eliminate the additional administrator positions? What is the effect? Do we know exactly who these people are and what they do? Is this something that teachers can handle as part of their jobs? I hear a lot about, you know, the overview of, we're going to cut 10 teachers. Do we know, is there any discussion we can have of who these 10 teachers are? I mean, I realize saying we're going to cut 10 teachers must send, you know, ripples through the schools if they don't know who they are. So I'd like some concept of what the effect will be. Just like, you know, I don't want to cut 200, whatever the number was, off sports without knowing what the effect would be on the particular kids. And as far as sports went, you know, I understand the position that you don't want to charge kids that are on a reduced lunch plan for the activities. And I really am, you know, in line with that thought. But one thing to consider is that those kids have parents. And those parents are going to get tax bills based on what you're deciding right now. So the same concepts that go into not wanting to charge people that can't afford it really need to be, you know, broadened in your perspective. Because if we're going to be pushing the, you know, cuts and call them draconian or whatever you want because we can't use a Cap Bank again, I'd really like to, you know, get an idea from the Board, what you are going to do. What are you thinking about more than one year in advance when these cuts have to happen?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Victoria Schwartz from TNEC on Somerset Road. I just want to mention, aside from the safety concerns that we have about the bus stops, I just want to say that when we looked at the TNEC community, we were considering Bergenfield and the other surrounding communities. And one of the main reasons that we chose TNEC was for the busing of the children. And what we're going to do essentially when we eliminate this is we're going to have a lot of people choosing other communities besides TNEC. So if we want to attract people to this community, I think we should be careful not to eliminate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start answering.
Dennis, I'll start with the ones that pertain to me, okay? If that's all right with you? Okay, as to the question about overtime and the teachers who are getting 1.2, for example, that's overtime in that they're giving up their contractual prep time to teach a period. If they're teaching an extra period, it means that someone's on leave. And that we most often cannot find a substitute for that person. That, so let's say a science teacher goes out on leave, on long-term leave. We can't find a qualified substitute for that person. We can offer a one, you know, an additional period. If someone has an additional period, it's prep time in their schedule. It's contract. We can't make a determination about, can't do a deal and say, well, you take it for, you know, $50 a day or something like that. It's a contractual situation, pretty much a contractual situation, I think, in terms of labor anyway. When we can, we, and someone is available of a lesser salary, we try to go for that person with a lesser salary. Sometimes when people are on leave, they're not on paid leave. So that means that they're not getting, the people on leave are not getting their salaries. So we're not adding a lot of extra expense to the district in that case or the taxpayer in that case because someone's not getting a salary. And we're not paying those people who take the 1.2 benefits. They're already getting benefits from the district. So, of course, what we want to do is get the best possible people we can to teach the children the classes. As to somebody for part-time, two part-time people to teach the children, I think it's difficult enough when we have a substitute. Not that, some substitutes are fabulous. But we don't really want, you know, one teacher one day and another teacher the next day if we can avoid that. That's just not good educational practice. As to class size, in some classes, we're above the state average and some classes we're below the state average. You can't take the number of teachers and the number of students and figure out any sort of a ratio. Because where we have special education classes, sometimes nine is the maximum student in a class and sometimes 12 is the maximum student in a class. And that all just, so that all depends. If we have an in-class support situation where that's one of the least restrictive environments for a student, where there are two teachers, one special education teacher to help make accommodations and modifications of the student's curriculum and a regular classroom teacher. So you can't, it's not as simple as looking at the number of kids and the number of teachers and figuring out class size. We don't have, we may rarely, if we don't have, if we have a lot of registration in the classes or in the school and yet somehow we don't have that number of parents in that particular class or the number of students who show up. We might have occasionally a class of 18, but most of our classes are at the elementary level or between 22 and 24, some are 25, and they're higher at the high school level in some classes. Depends on the class. As to the solar panels, the solar panels were never money-making. They were energy because they were, because we didn't pay for the solar panels. The people are kind of, the solar company has the solar on our property and we get energy reduction. So we get some savings in the energy, in the reduction of energy cost. We don't get, we're not making money on that. Sorry, I apologize about the agenda today and duly noted. And, let's see, what did I miss? Did I miss something? The administration, the overtime, the class size? Oh, offering teachers or nurses the opportunity to work at a lower salary, that's, it's a contractual issue, and we can't do that by law. So a lot of things sound reasonable and simple. They're not, they might be reasonable, they're not simple.
All right, the first question was about the budget and had to do with the courtesy and non-public bus routes. Now, the budget that we presented on March 11th, and it was adopted, the preliminary budget, did include the elimination of courtesy busing at the 1.4 miles with the exception of the preschool and kindergarten students and the reduction of the non-public bus routes by four. The budget we presented, actually, it wasn't a presentation, but a discussion last week, April 1st, where we reshuffled the deck, did not eliminate the courtesy busing or reduce the non-public busing. And we did fund the Brian Hawthorne roof replacement, the first payment, which is due next year. So that's where it is right now. We are going to have another Finance Committee meeting. At least we have consensus from the Board that the bank cap of 4.25 is going forward. It's just a matter of with the reductions. And hopefully, we'll resolve that at the next Finance Committee meeting. Now, I don't have the figures on the payout for the lease of the two roofs. But if you email me, and I'll give that to you after the meeting, I will then send you that information. I will get it out, because we are getting some SDA funding from the School Development Authority for that. And I hope that answers your question. It might be, but I want to be sure. I don't want to say something and then it might be wrong. The second was about the CPI. Now, I don't know where your information is coming from. Every year when we do the budget, we get directives from the Department of Education specifically related to transportation. We get a letter from the Commissioner which says, well, your rate and new payment for next year will be this amount. It happens to be 884, and it happens to have been 884 for the last few years. But if that were to change, we would get that in writing from the Commissioner as to what we can pay. They give us the CPI rate, and that's where I get the 1.34%. I didn't pull it out of the air. That for transportation routes that are being renewed, the Department will not approve renewals that have a greater increase than, and they give us, they say CPI is 1.34%. So now, sometimes we rebid routes and we get it cheaper. Sometimes companies will renew routes without an increase. But they can't renew the route greater than what the Department tells us. And that's where we get that CPI number from. I don't really budget the CPI rate. I only do that for the transportation contracts that we think we're going to renew. So that's where that comes in. On the third one, I apologize about the agenda. We'll make every effort to see that they are posted earlier and at much more convenient times that you have a chance to view it before.
Okay, there were some other questions here that I think might be appropriate for our Superintendent to ask. I think the question was asked about, what's the effect of eliminating administrators and teachers?
Well, I can't tell you the teachers or the names of the teachers because I did propose middle school dance and drama. And there was some discussion about that on the Board. Actually, I'm looking at the dollar amount, and I'm hoping that it doesn't come to 10 teachers. But we'll look at class size and enrollment and hopefully make the decisions that somehow between class size and enrollment changes, that's how we'll have to make the decision for the teaching staff members. As to the administrators who are on the list for cuts, they're non-certificated administrators. One is happening through retirement. And there are two others on the list. And the people will be notified. The three additional administrators, and I want to be clear, that wasn't my recommendation, but if that's what, if the Board talks a lot about, you know, sharing the pain or sharing the sacrifice. And since that had been discussed prior to, early on in the Finance Committee, there were positions discussed. And two of the positions that I certainly am not in favor of are two assistant principal positions. And the reason, the impact on the district of eliminating those positions beside the culture and climate of our schools would be pretty extreme in terms of the observation evaluation of staff members. Because already, all of the administrators have quite a number of observations and evaluations to do with the new teacher observation system. And I'm not complaining about that. It gets everybody, including Mr. McCall and myself. It gets everybody, including Mr. McHale and myself, have quite a large number of observations to do of teaching staff. And it's great. It gets us out into the buildings, we know what's going on, we see the classrooms, you know, in a different way than we always saw the classrooms when we go out and visit the buildings. But our administrators in the buildings have between sixty and seventy observations to do, and then evaluations for those observations. So I can tell you already, from not having a special education director, and having Mr. McHale pick up the work of that, and I'm picking up some of the work of that, we've increased our number of observations. So if I have to, so we have 140 observations that are not being done, that will be done by sitting administrators, not being done by the people whose jobs are going to be cut. I don't think they'll be, they won't be done probably quite as well, because the more you have to do, the shorter the time, and probably the least time, less time you take in doing the observation. So there's the quality of feedback to instructional staff, which is one of the big advantages of the new observation system, plus all those many, many things they do for students in the schools. So, that hurts, and I'm not, you know, it's, I don't want to use that word that everybody else uses, but I will tell you, it's sort of devastating to think about that impact on our schools. The other is a non-instructional position that we're going to have to figure out how to do. I know you don't want to hear me complain, and I certainly love my job, and so does Mr. McHale. We have nothing to complain about, everything to celebrate. But it's hard, we picked up a lot of extra jobs, so, you know, it's, but we'll do it if we need to. Because we want to keep teachers in front of the kids in the classroom, and we want to keep instructional programs, and it might be a sacrifice, but it's a sacrifice made willingly, if that's the will of the board.
Okay, the, mostly the comments were that, comments, not necessarily a lot of questions or recommendations. One recommendation was in regards to the board, having their bio on the website. I wasn't sure exactly what was meant by that, other than, we do have our names, as well as the committees, and who actually serves on those committees, as well as our phone numbers, actually, our home numbers that are on there. I don't think that it is what it is, you know. There's no way to hire anyway, you know, so, Big Brother is us. But, and I don't think many board members even, a board, school boards do that sort of information, but if you want to know who's on the school board and the different committees, that's actually posted on our website, that you can take a look at. And if you want to know my credentials, you can, you can actually just Google me, and I'm all over the place. You'll find all the terrible things I've been doing. So with that, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda.
David.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
Just in terms of the finance committee, as Ernie said, it is on the website, but I'm one of the members of the finance committee, Clara Williams, Howard Rose, and Sebastian Rodriguez is the chairman of the committee. And all of our committees are listed under the Board of Ed section of the TNEC schools' website. One other thing that, in terms of the overtime issue, and this may come as a shock to a lot of people, but given what current benefit costs are, for people who make under, somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars a year, it is actually cheaper to pay overtime than it is to hire another person and pay their benefits. Just, if you want to do the math, if you figure out what a family plan costs, and I did this at one point, because I was PO'd about what my grants were being charged, I was stunned at the amount of money that came out to be. But this is one of the major reasons why there are so many issues in terms of lower-paid jobs being cut, because it is actually cheaper to pay a person overtime than it is to pay their benefits.
I also want to add one other thing regarding, you know, the board. Anybody can serve on the board. All they need to be is a resident of TNEC, and over, I think, the age of eighteen.
U.S. citizen.
And a U.S. citizen, and you can serve on the board. One thing that is not known, though, is that you just don't get up here and just do your thing, that you're actually required by law to be involved in professional development. We have to all be fingerprinted, background-checked, and not only do we have to do the training, but we have to redo the training. So every time you run, every year, you do some sort of training in law, in budgeting, in strategic planning. And so, there's a lot of time to spend, not just here in our board meetings, with the workshops, or with the regular public meeting, or with the subcommittees, but also going to different workshops with the New Jersey School Board Association. And once again, we're compelled to do that. So folks who've been here for a while have gone through a tremendous amount of training, and no other elected office requires that. Not the council, not senator, not assemblyman, not even your president has to go through. In fact, they all learn on the gig, and they make lots and lots of errors. But that's what it is. So if you want to be a board member, you got to also bring on that lifelong learning attitude, because as you can see, the laws and the policies and procedures change, actually, on a regular basis. Sebastian?
And unlike elected officials, we do it for free.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm just going to ask, I'm just going to, thank you. I'm just going to ask, the next meeting we have will be on May 1st, May 6th, which will be the time when we vote for the budget.
Say it again, not the next meeting, no.
What did they say? April, now it's April?
I believe that, and it may be good to talk about that. We were, we looked at two dates to add, so that next week would be the 15th. We thought of that, whatever you decide about a finance committee, and then the following two Wednesdays.
Right.
We have two more Wednesdays in April.
That would be the, what, 22nd, the 29th?
The 22nd.
Sorry.
The 22nd, the 29th, as possible meetings on the budget.
Well, that's where I'm getting it. I didn't know we have, I want to make sure everyone knows.
Today.
We can talk about it right now. I mean, are we cool with that? I mean, we want to add at least the two more dates before the May 6th deadline?
I'm not there until you say.
Okay, I mean, but for who can be there? Because we want to make sure that everybody get their input in, and then we go do our thing. Fair enough? And if it comes by, if the next meeting, we feel that we don't need the third one before May 6th, then, you know, we don't have to do that. Is that, is that fair? Is that okay? All right? Okay.
All right, let me get this scheduled straight now. So we're going to have the finance committee meeting next week, but now, you're not available Wednesday. So it's-
Monday or Thursday?
We'll have to change. We'll suspend the Utah.
We're working out behind the scenes, okay?
I'll get all of this stuff out to you tomorrow, and we'll get the schedules set.
Cool. All right, we get now to move on to, oh yes, I'm sorry.
The finance committee is going to be meeting. Is there a clear charge, you know, so that we know what the intent or what information will be coming back? Because otherwise, it just may be beneficial to have this information discussed in full board. Because it appears sometimes when we get information back from the finance committee, it doesn't seem to be as clear as it should be, so maybe it's more beneficial that we meet as a whole. That was just my thought.
Actually, we're going to do both. I mean, basically, if they go, I mean, the point of today's meeting was to kind of give them that charge. We, the charge is that it's a four and a quarter. Now, how's that going to break down? And then they can look under the hood, to look at the details in terms of how do we make those things happen? So, the next time they come back to us, they should come back with executable items, not sort of pie in the sky sort of stuff. And then we get an opportunity to sort of discuss that. And maybe we might reject the whole thing and throw it out, but that's why we're putting those, the most we can do is the next two Wednesdays that we have available. So they'll be working in the background, it comes to the foreground, and then we give them more feedback if we feel the need to do that. So that way, we're covering all our bases, because some of the stuff, we're not going to be able to unpack it here. I mean, unless somebody has another suggestion, I'm open, I'm game.
I agree, that makes sense.
David?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, so if the projected number as the baseline is less than the adjusted budget, let's say there's $300,000 less, does that mean that we're still going to the 4.25 percent, or all that is subject to discussion based on what the revised baseline is?
I think it's all subject to discussion. In fact, you know, when you talk about the non-public busing and the public busing, outsourcing, everything changed because we got a different number. So, what we're hoping is that revenues will increase, or at least not go lower, and that expenditures become less. But that may be wishful thinking. We good? Everybody okay? Yes. Want to take this time, I'm sorry, my due diligence here, to acknowledge the presence of two council members, Mr. Alan Song and Mr. Jason Castle. Okay, so we're going to move on now to agenda items?
Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Operation Motion Number 39.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion?
Resolution Number 9, we have, Number 39, we have a motion and a second. Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
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 The problem with you doing that, the people at home can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, with one small correction, and that's regarding the statement that there were thirty people at the Martin Luther King celebration at Lowell. In fact, there were two groups of 200 each. The 30 should have referred to the park meeting that was held at night. So otherwise, it's fine.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move School Operation and Curriculum Motion 84 through 91.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion?
I need to speak.
Okay, Barbara, the Clara?
Are you, we need-
Let me, I'll-
All right.
Board Op and Curriculum 90. We did not, that got on quickly and out of our hands, and we did not get a chance to give the board the background information on that curriculum, so we'd like to pull that. Mr. McHale has prepared and is preparing further, an explanation, that background information. You know, we don't like to give you that. It was unintentional, and we know you don't like to receive things like this without background information.
It was meant for the May agenda.
Okay. So do we need an amendment?
So, so then I'd like to move to table, School Operation and Curriculum, School Operations and Curriculum Motion Number 90.
Second that.
Thank you.
Vote on it?
No, we'll vote on it as Resolutions 84 through 91, tabling 90.
Okay. Yes, Clara?
I would like to pull out items 147 through 149. Oh, oops. Sorry.
Any other comments on the motion? We good? Clara? We good? Okay. All right, roll call, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Resolutions 84 through 91, tabling 90. Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
Back to group?
Yes.
Mrs. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Walzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Worrell?
Yes.
So carried.
I just would like to go back to this item Number 85. There was a question that Ms. Williams had last week about the tickets that are being donated from Bergen Pack Arts Access Program. And this program is a new program that was started by the Bergen Performing Arts Center, in which they donate tickets to non-charitable organizations and schools. And someone who is an employee at Hawthorne School is, has, you know, a relationship and a connection with someone at Bergen Pack, and so they selected Hawthorne School to receive those 28 tickets. And the school is giving them out to students who have demonstrated academic achievement or have made academic progress.
Thank you. We like that kind of news.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Finance and Budget Motion Number 131 through 149.
Second.
Now.
I would like to have items 147 through 149, set aside, or pulled?
Does anyone wish to speak-
Vote on it separately.
Do we need a motion on that? No, she just pulled it. Okay, does anyone want to speak to the other motions? All of them? Yeah.
146, I just have a question. I noticed the pay rate for lunch aids and the company bill rate was the same.
Can you speak to that? I'm assuming they're not going to charge us any overhead for the lunch aids. Is that an incorrect assumption?
No, should be the 4410.
The same as the hot process?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Yes.
Good catch.
Yes.
It's just, it's related to that, and I've said it before, and I will repeat myself continually. Everybody thinks that outsourcing is the cure-all. There, I've talked to a number of districts that have outsourced in recent times, and they find that within a couple of years, they have increased the rate that the companies are, the companies have been charging at a far greater rate, the savings disappear. And I just want, so when we are making a projection for the future, I hope we will build that into our rates as well.
Okay, I just wanted, you say that a lot, and that's cool, and we all have our religions. I have talked to people too, who've said it works for them. And we're not saying that the rate is not going to go up from outsourcing. Really what we're saying is it's going to go up slower, because it's only going to go up. If we have the employee here, we don't have the money. That's the point that we're sort of making here. And even to David Gruber's point, I mean, what he's saying is absolutely correct, you know, in terms of the salaries and all that sort of stuff. And you're right, you know, we could have done it a lot quicker. I'm telling you, I want it slow, because I'm hoping that, for a miracle, that they may, if I do it slow enough, maybe there'll be an economic turnaround, and maybe we can do this a lot better. And now, that does not deal with the other nuanced issue of quality of performance and all those other things that we as a board cannot get to, which I find utterly frustrating. You know, because all the, because the premise in both of those things is an oversimplification of what the problem is. Because the assumption is that for people who are against outsourcing, is that all the people that we have here as permanent worker are great. And we know that's not true, because we hear the complaints. The flip side of that is that, oh, well, we'll save money, we'll bring people in. That's not true either. I mean, totally. It's a balance. If you get people who are totally incompetent, you can actually lose money from all the problems that they're creating. And so, really what it is, is that you have to manage both of these things. And so, all the things are tools that we're doing, trying to deal with an immediate problem, and how we deal with that in the long term, finding the balance between permanent workers and outsourced workers, and sort of working that together. It's a balancing act, but ultimately, it comes back to the people, whether they're outsourced or whether they're permanent. So, I don't think that it's a solution for everything. You know the solution for everything? Is that we have a ton of money, so much money that nobody even cares. But that ain't the world we live in. So I'm on this planet, in this world, and so I deal with what's in front of me. So does that, that make sense? So, I'm not trying to persuade you, I'm just trying to let you know that, to say that we all, because you keep saying we all, and that's the problem that I have, that we don't believe that, that this is a solution to our problems. It is addressing an issue in the best way that we can. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
To that same agenda item, but I just wanted to state that, you know, that it's a decent rate of pay, despite the fact that it is being outsourced, and I hope that's, you know-
you know, that we would have some of our best powers that would remain with the district. And in a, in that fantasy world, it would be nice that we wouldn't have to have the overhead, but that there could be some type of negotiation or something worked out so that we could actually keep them, and, you know, in some capacity, if there was an opportunity to renegotiate or have those conversations. I mean, that would be in, in a better world, where we could come to some kind of agreement. But in the meantime, I just wanted to state that hopefully, with that rate, understanding that benefits and everything are different, but that we would hopefully be able to retain some of our best powers.
Well, I think that, for instance, Inglewood was telling me that, some of the board members were telling me that the outs, I forget exactly which positions were outsourced, but when the, the contract expired, that they doubled the rate. So, I mean, as I said, the, you know, the savings evaporated instant, I mean, at a lot faster pace than they had anticipated. And that's all I'm saying, is that because, once you get rid of the permanent staff, then you are kind of tied into outsourcing. You may not have to stay with that particular outsourcing outfit, but you are going, you're kind of starting to restrict yourself somewhat.
Actually, my response to that is that the reason, you could always hire the people back, the reason you don't is 'cause you don't have the money in the first place, that's why you did the outsourcing. If you have, if we were flush with cash, we could hire everybody else back. That is certainly an option. But we can't fire people unless we do it in seniority. We can't do that, but with outsourcing, you can. And talking about Inglewood, I mean, one of the things is that, what they did is that they wait till they reach critical mass and end up outsourcing large numbers of folks, which was reported in the paper, and I also spoke to them about that, where maybe with the secretaries, they didn't do such a good job, but I talked to them about the custodian, and they said they did that like decades ago, and it's been great. So, I mean, and actually, someone you know, so, okay, so, I don't want to kind of keep going back and forth about this, but I just say, you know, that nobody's saying that this is a solution to all our problems. Yeah.
You know, and none of us like to do it, right? So it's an economic story, and we saw with the night shift, right, where we were gonna give back fifty percent, if they would move forward fifty percent. And everything is subject to a negotiation, and the question is, is the premium to the market? And the problem is, we can't afford it. I mean, it's really as simple as that. The other piece of this is, you know, we start with the teachers and some of the others. I'd love to pay more for pay-for-performance, but we can't. So there's grievance procedures, early hiring, all this other stuff, so we can't manage these folks, as we could in other areas.
Any other comments or questions on the agenda? Roll call, please.
All right, now, you want to vote separately on One Forty-Seven, One Forty-Eight, Forty-Nine, together or separate each one? Because then we'll have to amend the motion now to include just One Thirty-One Through One Forty-Six.
You could, you could put them together.
Dr. Dugood, if you could amend your motion, One Thirty-One to One Forty-Six, the separate vote on those other three resolutions separately.
That's so amended.
Mr. Rose?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Resolutions One Thirty-One Through One Forty-Six.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Mr. President, I'd like to move Finance and Budget Motion, One Forty-Seven Through
One Forty-Nine.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Resolutions One Forty-Seven Through One Forty-Nine. Yes.
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 Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel Motion, Two Twenty-Nine Through Two Fifty-
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? For those of you wondering why we're going through this so quickly, we have a workshop meeting actually last week where we had a lovely discourse about these matters. Roll call, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Resolutions Two Twenty-Nine Through Two Fifty-Three.
Correct? Mm-hmm, yes, correct, sorry.
Yes.
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 Okay, that wraps that up, now we move to the audience participation part again, where you get to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. We're gonna do about twenty minutes on that, for real.
I actually have a minute.
Okay, yeah. I've been doing it, you can take, keep time, you know. All right then. I got the clock. Go ahead.
Zev Derrick, Johnson Avenue. I'm just gonna, I'd just like to ask for more information on the progress on the solar panels. It's been about fourteen months since, since they fell, and if I could lease that much space on public property for free for fourteen months, that'd be great, but I believe there's been two publications in the, in the paper about the status, and it's just, it's not enough for the neighbors of, and parents to, to hear what's going on, and, and there's, you know, been no sign of, of progress, so I'd like to hear more about that. Also, I'd like to thank you guys for your dedication and, to the residents and students, and volunteering your time, it's much appreciated.
Anyone else, non-agenda items? Only one? Do you really have to do it? Go ahead. No, no, you go there and do it, do it right.
I appreciated the clarification at the last meeting about the miscommunication by the email that went back and forth, and I had asked if, you know, I would get a clarification to the Oprah request with the update, and I just hadn't received anything yet, it's another meeting. I'm sure you're tired of me asking, I assure you, I'm tired of asking, I was just hoping I can get some information about whatever reports or emails or whatnots were actually under discussion, so when it comes up inevitably in two, three years, I have some basis of comparison of what you were thinking now with what you were thinking then.
I'm just, yeah, you, no, I do what you're talking about, all right, okay.
Unfortunately, I do, but we had this conversation, so I find myself apologizing to you twice tonight, and I'll try, try not to make that happen again, I will not make a habit of this. As soon as I saw you tonight, I realized I hadn't sent you what I told you I would send you. So there is one item, and I will make sure that tomorrow, when I go in, I won't promise eight o'clock I have a meeting, but sometime tomorrow, I will send that to you, and...
I tried to be reasonable.
You were very reasonable, I just didn't do it. It wasn't intentional. To the solar panels, I did explain that there was no real revenue from them, but thank you for asking that very important part. Here's what we know right now. This has gone to the township, so the plans to reconstruct appropriately the solar panels have, the plans have gone to the township. I explained last week that we had a forensic engineer, we, the township looked, everybody looked, the Hudson Solar had gone bankrupt and were bought out by another company. So the email exchanges that have been going back and forth between our facilities director, Anthony DeAngelo, and the company indicate that, and we did give the, the board an update, that they are, and now they can't work when school's in session, so they're gonna have to work, they have to work away from the children. So I'm hoping that, I'm more than hopeful, I should say, I'm, I'm counting on by the end of the summer having everything repaired and back in operation, where standing out there that we fully expect to be paid is, is payment for the, the solar, the energy savings that we have lost because we turned the solar off for safety sake, so all the electricity was turned off in the solar panels, and nothing was being generated because we were afraid that that was a safety risk. So, back to, it's, it's about bankruptcy and getting new people and making sure that our forensic engineer looked at it carefully to make sure that the structures, the, the problems with the structures, and they had to do with the way the epoxy, so you know, so you know what that was, and, and that that wouldn't happen again, and I wish I could say the township had it for a really long time, but they didn't, they, you know, they, but they looked at it and did their due diligence, and, so we're moving forward with it. We still think it's a good idea, and we think going green is a good idea, and energy savings, and all the educational opportunities that would, that would give students and, and adults in our environment, but that's the update.
You good? Oh, you're not good. All right, what can I tell you? All right. Just one thing, though, this whole thing with the solar panel, I mean, I heard someone talk earlier about the busing and being conscious of the environment. This is actually, it was a comprehensive holistic sort of plan where the solar panels was only one piece of that. In fact, we spent about two and a half years reviewing this, checking it seven ways to Sunday, and, you know, you have your best laid plans, and, you know, and then nature happens. Yeah, we had architects, we, in fact, we took so long calculating the numbers, the S-Racks went from something like five hundred dollars to down to what? I don't know, like seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine, something like that.
Something like that. So one minute, we thought we were gonna bring millions to the district, and in the next, it was just okay. But we still felt it was a good thing in terms of the ecology, and we also, the educational component of that, but, you know, we had a nor'easter, and stuff happens. And that is one of the reasons why we could not move it very quickly, 'cause we didn't own it, and that became a whole legal thing, and so, if anybody likes to sue, it's certainly companies, particularly companies that are going under, so we really had to be very careful about that. So, we would've loved to have, had that thing done within a month's time, but we had not much leverage. We had to go through legal system now to make that happen. Okay? All right, so, yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'm gonna beg you and the board's indulgence, I indicated earlier that the resolution that you passed was off by a dollar from the March eleventh resolution, and when we got our review back from the county office, they indicated that it was off by the dollar. Also, if we could correct that, that one-dollar error, in, in adopting another resolution, and also including specific language about the bank cap. I had the bank cap in there that we were using, but they wanted specific language, referring to the code, et cetera, how you could do it. So I prepared that, and it's just the same preliminary budget, except for the dollar, and it includes the bank cap language that they're asking me to do from the county office, or for, for a dollar, yeah, it's a, and actually, it has to do with the tax levy, because the tax levy that we approved was eighty-three million, nine twenty-eight, three forty-two, and it's three forty-one. So she's telling me here, the county bay, to amend the resolution. So, since we're meeting, I would appreciate and beg your indulgence if, I give you the resolution, we approve it tonight, so that we're okay, and that's just the preliminary budget.
Okay, cool, cool, cool.
Can I give a dollar and save everyone time?
You may do it.
They would've moved the budget, would have to change.
At least you get a chance to vote on it, you weren't here last.
See, will you avoid it?
No, I haven't.
Nothing to bureaucracy.
Not impressed.
Mr. President, I'd like to move, I'm assuming this is Finance and Budget? Finance and Budget Motion, Number One Fifty?
I'm pleased to second this one.
Roll call, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second for this change of the resolution. I call the roll. Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, the board has to go into executive session to deal with matters of personnel, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and when confidentiality is no longer needed, we'll make those matters known public, and we anticipate that we will be in executive session for approximately two and a half minutes, five minutes, five minutes, five minutes.
Those are very small conferences.
So should you not be here when we get back? Thank you for coming, and have a wonderful night, and happy Passover and Easter for the rest of us. Take care.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's do it. The regular public meeting?
Move to close executive session and reopen the regular- Move to close executive session and reopen the regular public meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's okay. I got this echo here. That's okay, we're good, we're good, we're good. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the report?
Move to accept the superintendent's HAB report.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Dugood?
Yes.
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 Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiggins?
Yes.
Mr. Rollout?
Yes.
Committee reports? Yes, yes.
I don't have a committee report.
It's all.
But, the next school board, the county school board meeting, I have earned my master board member plaque. So, they're going to, thank you, they're going to do a presentation, and I thought it was May 5th or May 6th. I can't confirm it, but, I know, I know. So, if it's May 6th, I thought it was May 6th. But, Dennis O. will confirm it tomorrow, and if it is on the 6th, then may have them come and bring it here.
That'll be good.
They will do that.
Okay, fantastic, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, yeah.
Did you ever get your master board?
Let's rethink this. I know, I earned it.
I know, me too. Okay.
I don't think I did that. I don't know what that is. Any other committee reports? Yes, you did, I'm sorry. And congratulations again, Clara.
Back in March, we discussed doing some sort of appreciation event for the parent boards of the WPAs. So, I've been with the board's agreement, I've been working on that, and this is a draft of an email, they'll go out to their personal emails, I've collected all that information. I'm proposing doing it at the May 13th meeting. So, first of all, I want to make sure people are comfortable with that date. Second of all, that you're happy with the email, it's pretty straightforward, I'm not going to read it out loud. And, thirdly, who would you, whose name should the email go out over? Would be the last question. Should be from Artie as president of the board.
I think it would just be the school board.
So, just best regards?
Yeah, TX Board of Education.
Okay.
I mean, I have no problem with that, but I think it is really the will of the board.
Is everybody comfortable with the May 13th date? Any issues with that? Issues with anything else?
I have a question. So, certificates, is that what? So.
And maybe apples?
Do you want the apple pins? So, if you want us to make the certificates?
Well, Linda will be in touch, or Christine, about the names and what you want on the certificates, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I have the, I have the date. It is May 5th, Tuesday, May 5th, at Magione's.
You know, we've gone, yes, Howard.
On another topic.
No, this is not a committee, you can't, go ahead. Well, actually, what I was going to say is that they have a good, I was going to say that, you know, they do a really nice job in terms of these meetings, and you should check it out. Sometimes they're useful, sometimes, not always.
Frontal low.
Right.
Multi.
What she's talking about, we went to this frontal low thing, and it was.
Not education, sweetie.
Right. But, you do get an opportunity, I think the last one that Clara and I went to, what time was that?
We met some of the. We met some of the legislators.
Legislature people, and, I don't know, they got talked a lot, you know, so that was, that's their good one, yeah. So, anyway, we can move on. So, what I'm saying is that it is hit or miss, but I do think it is worth the board going to these meetings and seeing what's going on, and sometimes, they actually are very good. In fact, the last time they did the legislator thing, they had Gordon Johnson there, and we could actually speak to him about some issues. Their lawyer was there who gave some really good information and presentations about negotiations and all that other sort of stuff. So, it is hit or miss, though. Okay, Howard?
I just wanted to mention that on Tuesday evening, the municipal government was considering a request that they endorse a thirty-ninth congressional district person who was indicating that he would like to have a resolution that would change the situation of costs to the Board of Education so that when, for example, someone has a tax appeal and they get a reduction in taxes, and the municipal government pays it out, that the municipal government also be allowed to claim the corresponding portion that the Board of Education had received, and that was not passed by our municipal council.
Clara, kudos to the council indeed. Thank you, thank you, Alan, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Artie, I just wanted.
Mazel tov.
Artie, I just wanted to add, that was the council, the assemblyman that was at that meeting that we were talking about, Assemblyman Ock.
Yeah, I know, he talked around it and around it and around it. Yeah.
Just wanted to mention that a few Saturdays ago, actually Clara and I attended the school board president's meeting for Burton County. Yeah, so it was, it was enlightening in sense that the Burton County, all those seventy-seven towns, of course, weren't represented, but they're trying to just do more in terms of shared information. We talked about legislative issues that we can continue to partner on, and, you know, it was quite informative in terms of just sharing strategies and just collective numbers and strength in numbers for addressing issues that affect us in Burton County.
I want to thank Javon and Clara for going there because I could not go, and it's important that we be at these meetings because, I mean, even though we're really thinking about locally, it's, it's a statewide and sometimes a national-wide issue that they're sort of addressing and stuff, and so this is kind of pooling our resources together. I have, I need some help from the board here. Many of you know Paula Rogavin, who is our advocate for, about the whole thing with CSX, and she has reached out to me on a couple of times, on a couple of occasions regarding the board and our students participating in some of the protests that they, or to highlight some of the dangers of CSX, which runs through our town and near several of the areas where our children tend to congregate, like the Rota Center, like BF, and has asked us to participate. And, she says, we are hoping to have speakers from among the blah, 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 as well as the Board of Education and School Board. We would like to invite you to speak either at BF at about a 1:15 PM or at the main rally at 2:30 PM. I think she has the date down here somewhere. And, I just want to get your feeling about that, you know. I mean, I think that it is something that we really need to address in terms of the CSX and the dangers that it poses for our kids. My only reservation in terms of sort of responding to this is that sometimes these groups have other agendas that I don't want to sort of pull us into, but I think that this might be something reasonable for us to sort of look at, and if you have any information about this or have been at any of these rallies, maybe you can enlighten the rest of the board. So, the first question is, do you feel that this is something that we can get behind or should get behind? Yes?
Before, yes or no, didn't we have some type of a policy on getting students out of the classroom to participate?
School day?
During school day. I think something came up a few years ago where students were also asked to participate.
Well, I'm reluctant to pull students into it, I'm very, even, you know, even I look at the civil rights movement and they definitely had students involved. I feel kind of queasy about that, so I'm really asking you as board members in terms of our representation, and is this something that will the board, that they feel they can get behind?
I know, but my, my question is, and David may know this, do we have a policy? Because I thought we had created a policy.
On the board or for the students? For the board, for adults or for the students?
No, no, for, for the students.
For the students, I think there, for the students, I think there is a policy, I'm almost positive there is no such policy for the board.
Asking the board, actually, the march here is on Sunday, March 17th. I'll send this to all of you, I didn't know whether she had or not. I meant to send it to you before we got here, but life is hectic. But, I'll send the whole email that she has asked us about, I just want to get your sense about that and what you're feeling about the CSS. I really talk about the board, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, can't do the student thing, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Okay, I understand, I thought you were asking for the students.
Well, she asked for the student, but I'm not, I'm asking the board. David, then Clara?
It's a clause that I, that I personally completely support, but I have some reservations about the board getting behind it as an entity, if, unless we are unanimously in favor of it. I had, I have, I would love to get, to get rid of CSX if we possibly could, but I don't see that happening, and, and I'm not sure that putting the board behind it is something that's, I don't think we want to put our imprimatur on it.
Can I add something?
Yeah, sure.
I was, when I was principal of BF, there was a movement to get CSX, for one thing, to quit idling on the tracks, and, because now, we didn't take students, but we did have the opportunity as adults, you know, PTO and administrator, to go to the council because the council had invited the CSX. I'm not suggesting that the council do this, but that's how we made our, our thoughts known, because there was a vehicle there for adults to make their thoughts, their thoughts known about the damage to children. So, at that point, we didn't use children. I, there's probably nothing wrong with, maybe, I don't know, we can look at the policy and we could let kids know, we don't want to keep information from children if they choose to go and make a statement about their best interests or the best interests of other kids on their own time.
If you'd indulge me, I'll just read what's here, I mean, yeah, sure.
I want to say about six months ago, maybe, the council created a resolution supporting the protest of, of CSX. I had that resolution sent here, and I was going to expand on it perhaps and tailor it to our needs. I have not had an opportunity to do that, but I, my understanding was that the board had, you know, received that, the council's resolution, which was very brief, and, and we were behind it. And, in the past, the council, I mean, the board has addressed the, the CSX trains. Now, the current status of the trains is that they are carrying a different type of, of oil, and it is much more volatile from what I understand, and, you know, and they are still idling down near our schools because I was, you know, I drive down that, that way sometimes.
Well, they're half a block from my house.
Okay.
At that point, it's kind of romantic, you hear the rumbling in the distance, but I don't think my friends that live on the river, on Palisades, it's not romantic at all. But, let me just read what, what it says. It's, it's taking place on Sunday, May 17th at 1:00 PM, March in Teaneck, New Jersey. Assemble in Sagamore Park, Windsor Road, and Beatrice Avenue, Teaneck, New Jersey. And, the danger zone march will start at the Teaneck Volunteer Ambulance Corp. and will continue north on Windsor Road, and will pass the park and homes, then will stop briefly at other vulnerable spots along the Riverline, underpass to Route 4, a major transportation route, Benjamin Franklin Middle School, Teaneck Fire Department, tunnelled for schoolchildren and other residents under Riverline. The march will proceed across the State Street Bridge over the River, I'm at the scroll back a little, Riverline, and will pass stores and restaurants on Queen Anne Road and the plaza to Palisades Avenue near two private schools, then to Volti Park on Palisades Avenue, and Volti Park are heavily utilized sports fields and playgrounds, right, that brand-new field we put in there, and the Teaneck Recreation, that, that field that, that our council was going to help get our kids there to play in, the public schools. Home to a daycare center, a senior center, a youth sports program. Also, there is a power substation, and so the rally will be at 2:30 PM. And, so basically, it's the things that, I'll send you this, but they actually sort of lay down some of the things that happened in North Dakota, and Bakin crude oil is being extracted, and so this is real. I mean, this is a real danger, and there have been situations that happened in this country and definitely in Canada where there have been explosions and people have died and all that other kind of stuff. But, we're talking about big oil and we're talking about, you know, a CXX, which is a, you know, a conglomerate, so it's, it's a serious thing. So, what you're feeling? Can we get behind this?
I think as private citizens, we live here in Teaneck, it's up to us to attend.
Okay.
I don't think we need to go there, you know, showing the school banner or anything like that.
Okay.
So, we go on our own and live with it.
Yeah.
Is it something that we can share on the website, at least as a community service to let people know and to be aware?
Are we cool with that?
I don't like to keep information from our students, I'd like to share it with the student government, but not with any agendas.
Yeah.
I remember when the town council did it, Dr. Pruitt in particular, and I remember there were flyers that were circulated throughout the town. I don't know if we put it on our school board website at that moment, but everybody got, you know, the flyer was circulated to anybody and everybody.
Okay, I mean, I'm game, and I think we should at least put the information out that we can put on our website that this thing is happening because it is a danger to our kids. Yes, Howard?
I agree that it's important, I agree it's a danger, and I, as an individual, had participated in a protest several months back, maybe it's more than several months now, that was at the bridge on Cedar Lane. What I'm thinking, though, is what community act, what's the criteria of which community topics we feel are pertinent and should be on the net site and which ones aren't? You know, to just, well, this one popped up because he's interested in it, or this one popped up because she's interested in it, or because we got a letter from Paula, good people all, or because we get a letter from a councilman, so on, or whatever it may be. So, again, I'm just, I'm not saying we shouldn't have the information, I think it's good to keep our students informed, it's something that does impact them, and God forbid, it may even impact them directly, or their families or friends, but again, the process of doing this, we don't have a process.
Well, I'm going to tell you, this is a process. I mean, the thing is that you will not be able to come up with a rubric for judging every conceivable sort of thing, it's just not going to be practical to put that kind of energy.
So, it's just what comes up by chance and then we discuss it?
Yeah, I think to some degree, yeah, that's why we're here, and we do our discernment. Like, for example, let's say someone says that, well, I like the fact that they're fighting against us, but this particular group is doing some nefarious things that we think are antithetic to the mission of our, of our, of our, of our school board. Then, we would say, no, we don't want to participate in that, I would have no problem in articulating that. In this particular case, we do know that this is a danger, this is, it's a national issue, actually, it's an international issue because it's between Canada and the United States, and it does impact the safety, which we spent a lot of time talking about, you talk about busing, have one of these things blow up by BF, you talk about solar panels, then that's going to be really something else. So, I think that this is, falls in our purview, I think we can make the case without too much of a stretch.